Good morning, welcome to City Council. Can everyone please take their seats? The meeting will begin shortly. Also, can you guys silence your phones? Good morning, good morning. City Council will begin momentarily. Can everybody please take their seats? Thank you.
Good morning, members of the City Council. Please remember to log into your devices. The meeting will begin shortly. Thank you.
The meeting will begin very shortly. Can everyone please silence their phones and take their seats? Can you please silence your phones and take your seats? Thank you.
Good morning, the council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
The quorum is now open. Please log into your device. If you need support, please raise your hand. The quorum is now open. I will now call on those who have not voted using the e-device. Alderman Hopkins, not present in chambers. Alderman Robinson, not present in chambers. Alderman Hall, not present in chambers. Alderman Beal, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Lee, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Ramirez, present. Ramirez is present. Alderman Curtis, not present in chambers. Alderman Mosley, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Fuentes, present. Alderman Burnett, is present. Alderman Spazado, not present in chambers. Alderman Vasquez, is present. Alderman Napolitano, is not, or sorry, Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley, is present. Alderman Gardner, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Clay, is not present in chambers. Your mayor, the mayor, we have a quorum.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. There are forty members that are present. We do indeed have a quorum. There are two members of this body that have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely, stating reasons in Rule 59. Those two are Alders Robinson and Spazado. Alder Robinson and Spazado, can you confirm your presence remotely?
Thanks, Spazado is here.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Robinson.
Robinson is here.
Robinson is present. Alderman Spazado.
Next, Spazado is here.
Spazado is present.
Very well, can I get a motion to approve the remote participation? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be so kind to remain standing for our invocation this morning. Our invocation will be delivered by the former alder of the 16th Ward, Bishop Shirley Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us go in prayer. Father God, we are so thankful that you allowed each of us to wake up this morning. But not only are we thankful, we are grateful. Because not only did you wake us up, but God, you brought us all here for such a time as this. And so I pray for our mayor, for our aldermen, for this entire City Council, and everyone that is standing here. God, we thank you for that since 1911, this building for 114 years has been standing as a symbol of hope and help to this great city of Chicago. God, we pray for the flag that represents our history, our geography, and our values. God, we pray for our business community that has been a vital part of our great city. And so, God, I pray that you will continue to allow Chicago to be a beacon of light in our nation with such cloudy issues. God, I pray that you will allow our city that has been founded on values and principles, God, that you will allow our city that is represented by each continent in this nation, you will allow our city to continue, God, to never compromise on our values that make our great city what it is today. And so, God, I pray and I ask that you lead our mayor, that you lead our aldermen. Allow them to lead with integrity. Allow them to lead with intention and allow them to lead with purpose. God, let them always be guided by the values of our great city and our great nation. The values of equity, the values of inclusion, the values of fairness, and the values of justice for all, which is the foundation of our nation. And so, God, from the press box to the guest box, from the back to the front, each of us have a story to tell in this history, of women's history. God, we thank you for the women that have guided our great nation and our great city. We thank you for this mayor, and we pray that you will continue to give him the leadership ability. We pray for each alderman and their families. God, I am grateful that you allowed me to sit in this seat for 16 years. I'm grateful that my daughter now sits in the same sacred seat that all that have led and guided our communities. I pray for your families, I pray for your friends, I even pray for your enemies. Alderman and Mr. Mayor, we pray that God will continue to lead and guide you. And so, by whatever name that you call him, some call him Allah, some call him father, some call him master, some call him lord. Whatever name you call him, we thank you for being who you are. It is so, and so it shall be. Amen, amen, and amen.
Amen. You may be seated. This is a portion of the meeting for public comments. Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker today is Jessica Lee.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jessica Lee, and I'm here to urge you to please support the ordinance to ban the sale of new fur products. We currently have almost half of City Council as co-sponsors for this bill, so I urge you to please have an open mind as to why this may be. I've seen concern in the media over the past week that this ordinance could negatively impact local businesses,
especially family-owned businesses.
However, the Humane Society has helped other fur store owners in other cities successfully transition to more sustainable and ethical products, and this would be no different. Our goal has been and will continue to be to provide insights and assistance to these local businesses on how they can transition if they are willing to allow us to help. This bill also gives them a whole year to transition, which allows time to phase out current inventory. There also seems to be a lot of misinformation around what the bill does and doesn't do. This bill only bans new fur from being sold. This bill does not apply to resale fur or used fur. This bill does not apply to sheepskin. Fur stores can still generate profits from all the other services that they already offer and profit off of, such as fur alterations, fur storage and care, the sale of faux fur, and the sale of other products such as handbags, shoes, etc. As a business owner myself, I know this transition for them is possible. The world is evolving, and there are so many entrepreneurs out there that start businesses every day, and they have had to learn how to pivot their business to keep up with current times. This is no different. Together, we can all continue to evolve as a whole to make the world a better place. We can't do so if businesses continue to generate profits off of exploiting animals. In addition, I want to clarify that this bill does not impact people from wearing fur that they already own. This bill also has a religious and tribal exemption that was added in at the request of many aldermen and women. The other point I want to make is that fur is not humanely sourced, and it's not possible for it to be humanely sourced. These animals are not hunted in the wild, shot quickly, and suffer no pain. These animals are usually trapped in the wild using very painful traps. They are then left stuck in these traps for hours or days until the trappers come to get them. A fur pelt is worth nothing unless it is intact, and the way to keep a pelt intact is by either anally electrocuting the animal or gassing them, or even worse tactics. These animals get so anxious in confinement that they often self-mutilate in traps. I hope that this ordinance brings the opportunity for local businesses and the Humane Society to work together to keep businesses alive while ending this outdated horrific practice. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning is Matthew King.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Hello, Chicago City Council. My name is Matthew King, and I represent the Christian Animal Rights Association. Our ministry intends to speak for the Christians in Chicago who represent about seventy-one percent of residents. I wanted to offer a little background first. The clothing of people in biblical times was made from wool, linen, animal skins, and perhaps silk. There's no explicit mention of fur used for clothing in the Bible, but we can gather what God thinks of fur by looking at some big-picture issues in Scripture. And God's original design was for humans to care for the animals and eat them. This paradise had no death for humans or animals. It was not until human disobedience brought sin and death into the world that humans and animals started to die. And so, death in the Christian and biblical worldview is always considered theologically bad. So, fittingly, 1 Corinthians 15:26 states, "The last enemy to be destroyed is death." And approximately 100 million animals are killed yearly for their fur. And because of the death involved, it's obvious that God is displeased with the fur industry and those who support it. And another issue is cruelty. One reputable source states, "The fur industry has long been a byword for cruelty, killing millions of animals a year in horrific ways to profit from their skins. Row upon rows of cages stacked on top of each other in foul-smelling sheds that resound with the screams of distressed animals. This is a fur farm. More than eighty-five percent of the fur sold today comes from such facilities where mink, foxes, and other animals are locked up for their entire lives, far from their natural environment with no opportunity to play, hunt, jump, or run, which often drives inquisitive, intelligent wild animals insane during their short lives." Numerous investigations of fur farms across many countries have documented atrocities including animals with eye infections, sores on their feet from filthy wire cages, missing limbs and festering untreated open wounds, some so deep that their brains are visible, babies kept in cages with the rotting corpses of their mothers, and animals who exhibit neurotic behavior as a result of psychological damage. And as the previous speaker mentioned, the methods used to kill animals on fur farms include vaginal or anal electrocution, gassing and poisoning, and all are gruesome, painful, and terrifying for the animals. And so, God would very much declare these disturbing accounts as animal cruelty, which the Bible condemns in Proverbs 12:10, stating, "The godly care for their animals, but the wicked are always cruel." And so, because of the tremendous cruelty and death involved in the fur trade, our ministry implores the Chicago City Council to pass a new fur ban as it would align with biblical principles, be pleasing to God, satisfy the Christians in Chicago, and protect the animal victims. And I want to thank you so much to the co-sponsors and supporter of this new fur ban, this new fur ban bill, and God bless everyone.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ellen Sveila. Our next speaker is Samantha Sawicka.
Samantha, please press star six to unmute.
Good morning. My name is Samantha Sawicki, and I would like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak on the issue of the fur ban in Chicago. I strongly recommend that the council members vote in favor of the ban on the sale of new fur products. The fur industry is rife with ethical and public health concerns, including significant zoonotic disease risk. I'm a physician, and I saw firsthand how the COVID pandemic ravaged the city when I worked on the COVID floor. when I worked on the COVID floors and the COVID ICU at the University of Chicago Medical Center. Meanwhile, during this time, COVID-19 was found in over 500 mink farms internationally, including in the United States. Scientists consistently warn us that fur farms could be the source of the next pandemic by allowing viruses like avian influenza and coronavirus to mutate and spread. In a recent article in the journal Nature, arguably the most respected journal in the scientific and medical communities, researchers tested fur animals and identified over 125 viruses, including a high prevalence of coronavirus and influenza viruses. They identified 36 novel viruses, over a dozen high-risk viruses, and viruses with clear cross-species transmission potential. One of the co-authors states, "I think the fur trade is a roll of the dice and an obvious route for the next pandemic to occur." A recent UN report found that 75% of all emerging infectious diseases are zoonotic, meaning transmissible between animals and humans. In an era where public health is a top priority, we must act on this knowledge. Beyond human health, the fur industry is based on immense animal cruelty, and in that respect, has gone effectively unregulated. If you're not familiar with the animal welfare issues involved, let me summarize. Animals such as mink, foxes, and chinchillas are confined to tiny wire cages for their entire lives, live in their own waste, and are deprived of all natural behavior. They never get to see the outdoors during their lives, and they are then subjected to painful killing methods, as previous speakers have described. The intense confinement makes the spread of bacteria and viruses on these farms rampant. If there has ever been an animal in your life, think of them while you are casting your vote. Consider the scale of the benefit of passing a fur ban, pandemic prevention, prevention of immense cruelty to animals, compared with the scale of the possible downsides of the ban. We are talking about a fashion product for which there are great replacements. There are many substitutes for fur and ways to support businesses that need to transition. Be clear, by passing this fur ban, you are directly helping to prevent the next pandemic. It's time for Chicago to join other cities and countries and take this important step away from the fur industry, which has harmed so many. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Ellen Sveila. Our next speaker this morning is Nancy Quintana.
Nancy is not present on Zoom.
Our next speaker this morning is Jasmine Smith.
Morning, everyone. I'm here. I am Jasmine Smith. I'm an activist. I fight for wrongfully convicted, innocent, tortured survivors and police accountability with Chicago Alliance Against Race and Political Repression. Brandon Johnson, I just want to say, it's time, brother. It is time to fight back for real and start exposing all of this corruption, because they are trying to tear you up. And it's a lot of corrupt people in these bodies that is harming our communities more than helping us. I stand, we stand in solidarity, and we stand in a vote of yes for Miracle Boy, which is a young youth activist that was fighting for many different things in our communities with our youth, the schools, and just giving back. In 2020, during a rebellion, a police attacked her, knocked her teeth out. Now, Monday, for all of you ones, there's a lot of black faces in here today, but this ain't even half of what goes on in our city. And I know a lot of y'all are getting acknowledged and recognized and congratulated today, but they are harming our black and brown communities. We are suffering. Our kids are dying. Our men are being wrongfully convicted and put in prison each and every day by this corrupt system. Miracle Boy was voted on Monday. 22 yeses to seven noes for her to get a $280,000 settlement for being attacked by the police, which ain't enough of what she endured. Then the fact that we finna come here today, and that alderman Raymond Lopez is finna try to defer her judgment to be set on for 48 hours, knowing he don't got the votes. Do y'all black people know that? Y'all here to smile and get photo ops with these aldermen, but they are not helping our communities. We are suffering by a lot of people in this body that's supposed to protect and serve us, and they not doing a damn thing. It's 19 aldermen, and I'mma keep repeating this, that got FOP donations to their campaign. That's the Fraternal Order of Police that's protecting the contract, that's protecting a lot of police from being held accountable for their misconduct. It's black and white with a lot of these cases. Not all cops are bad cops. But when you stay and be quiet and be silenced and sell your people out, you become complicit. So I have no remorse for you, because you're not standing up for the greater good and what's right. So I just want everybody to look at yourselves and look at y'all people, because when I see a lot of y'all faces, I gotta frown other than to smile. I gotta, I didn't even get a good morning, queen, good morning, sus, from none of you sorority. Y'all look, some of them looked at me like I was garbage, and that's a shame. They got us too divided. We need to stand together, because I'm not no different from y'all. Again, we need to do better as a people. We need to do better as a body that's sitting here, because ain't nothing should be congratulated when we are suffering. We are $2 billion in debt for misconduct.
Much for your comments. Our, our. Our next speaker, our next speaker this morning is Thomas Vincel.
I would ask that the members who are in the chambers today to respect our public comment process and hold your interactions with one another until either in the hallway or after the meeting, please.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Thomas Vincel. I'm a native Chicagoan. I want to thank, take a minute here just to thank everyone for being here today, and you have some amazing stories, and thank you, Ms. Jasmine, for what you said out here. The reason I'm here today, I want to thank two people first of all. Alderman Lopez for bringing this proposal to ban and sale of new furs in the city of Chicago. And my own alderman, please let me speak. Okay, my own alderman, the 23rd ward, this alderman Tavara is here. The reason I'm asking to do this, I don't have a prepared statement. I speak from the hearts of all you folks here. The city of Chicago does not need to be selling fur products anymore. It's a nasty, cruel, oppressive industry. Look how these animals are raised, number one. These are predatory animals raised in small cages, often going crazy, living in their own mess, their own feces, their own urine. They are, the way they're killed, too, is extremely inhumane. Many of these animals are gassed. Many of these animals are electrically probed through the mouth, through the anus, and through the vagina, so they don't damage the fur products here. I want to remind you folks something here, too, in the city. It was five years ago yesterday, the city was under lockdown from the pandemic. It was a zoonotic disease. These fur farmers are largely not regulated here. Right now, we're currently in the middle of an avian flu here. It wasn't too long ago in the city of Chicago, we found hundreds of birds dead on Lake Shore Drive here, okay? It's a matter of time before these zoonotic diseases spread to humans again. With the country pulling out of the World Health Organization, it's a sign that we're gonna be in for another pandemic in the next few years. What we can do in the city here, aldermen, please, let's consider this ban of the sale of new fur products in the city of Chicago here. Let's say something here. We had a nice prayer before the meeting started today. Why don't we extend this prayer to animals here? Are we kind and compassionate animals here? Do we own pets? Do you ever look at these animals as being sentient beings here in the state of Chicago? We look at these animals here as not as commodities, but as creatures that we love and take care of and nurture and so forth. Now, of course, we can solve all the world's problems out here, okay? But I can say we can show we are a world-class, compassionate city by extending that compassion to animals, too. Chicago is a major tourist destination, too. Let's put ourselves progressively here on a world stage and show we are a compassionate humanitarian city here. I also want to address quickly, too, the industries that are complaining they're gonna lose business because of this. I could tell you folks, the one time I worked for Blockbuster Video, they're gone. Kodak's are gone, okay? Radio Shack is gone. Why is that? It's because the world changed. They did not change with it. You need to adapt and improvise to new circumstances. I'm asking every alderman here, please, you can do a really good, positive thing for the city today. Let's pass this ordinance. Let's ban the sale of new fur products in the city of Chicago. Let's show the world we are a first-class, compassionate city that cares about animals and cares about creatures throughout the world. Please let me speak, okay? I'm just saying, let's be compassionate, okay? I can't solve all the world's problems. I know where you're coming from. I respect what you have to say up here, okay? But let's start somewhere. Let's ban the sale of new fur products in the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Noreen Lodi.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I am here to respectfully request your support for the ordinance to ban the sale of new fur products in the city of Chicago. This ordinance is a compassionate, forward-looking step that aligns with our city's values. The fur industry is inherently cruel. Animals are confined to small cages and killed using inhumane methods, such as gassing, skinning alive, and anal electrocution, all for the sake of fashion. Today, we have countless cruelty-free alternatives that look just as good without causing suffering. I want to emphasize that this ordinance is not about hurting local businesses. In fact, it's designed to allow them to continue thriving. Furriers can still offer storage, cleaning, repairs, and resale of used or vintage fur products. These services remain legal and profitable. This is about ending the sale of newly-produced fur, not shutting anyone down. Other cities and states have already shown this works. California passed a similar statewide ban, effective in 2023, after successful local bans in Los Angeles, San Francisco, and West Hollywood. Businesses in those communities have adapted, and they continue to thrive. The ordinance also includes an exception for religious practices, ensuring cultural and faith-based uses are respected. Public support is overwhelming. 71% of Americans support banning the sale of new fur products. The fashion world is already moving in this direction. Gucci, Prada, Burberry, and department stores like Macy's and Bloomingdale's have all gone fur-free. The industry is evolving, and consumers want ethical, sustainable choices. We must also consider the environmental impact. Fur production uses toxic chemicals like formaldehyde and chromium to preserve the pelts, polluting the water and creating hazardous waste. Faux fur, despite being synthetic, has been shown to have a significantly lower environmental footprint, especially when made from recycled or plant-based materials. It is cleaner, safer, and more in line with modern sustainability goals. This ordinance is a smart, balanced step forward. It protects animals, supports sustainable business practices, respects cultural traditions, and reflects the values of a modern Chicago. With these points in mind, I respectfully ask that you vote yes on this ordinance. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning is Kaylee Harris.
Good morning. My name is Colleen Harrison. First, I'd like to say, Mayor Johnson, excuse me, Mayor Johnson, I did not vote for you. However, as a citizen of Chicago, you're still my mayor. And I think a lot of times, we all criticize, we don't understand, and we all been loud and wrong, and I know I've been there. And the reality of it is, we have to put things in perspective, and where the state of the city is right now is not holistically a byproduct of what's been going on the last 22 months. So, I choose to want to be part of the solution instead of part of the problem. I think a lot of people here, rightfully so, have a lot of anger. We get, and rightfully so. But again, we can have a right motive, but you gotta ask yourself, are you really choosing the right method to try to get done? A lot of things that I'm, this is my first time here, that I hear is still rooted in a lot of divisiveness. And again, just like, you know, Sister Coleman prayed about everything, you're supposed to pray for your people in authority. And you have to really ask yourself, again, are you trying to be part of the solution or part of the problem? And slow down and do that, but I think moving forward, again, we got a lot of things we frustrated with, with the city, with the migrant situation, the budgets. But again, if this didn't happen over these last 22 months, and I think we all need to get our minds in a place where we are thinking collectively, because a lot of, there's a lot of division here right now. We need to get our minds thinking in a more collective state, get your emotions out of the way, and put your thinking caps on, and let's think from an intelligent disposition. I digress.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this, our next speaker this morning is Mariah Mata.
Hello, city council. My name is Mariah Mata, and I am before you today as a lifelong Chicago resident of the southwest side and a member of the Chicago Environmental Justice Network, joined with several community members from across the city who stand, who are here before you, joined with me to urge the city council members to support the Hazel M. Johnson Cumulative Impacts Ordinance upon introduction. Hazel M. Johnson fought to stop toxic pollutants in Chicago. She led this movement decades ago, and today, we are demanding that her legacy be honored with real policy. That time to support a long overdue policy that addresses the cumulative impacts of outdated practices that leave our communities vulnerable and sick is now. Chicago must lead, not lag, in protecting public health. A wide variety of health impacts arise because of consistent overexposure to pollutants from industry and diesel pollution. And when the number of contributing polluters aren't considered, there is no escaping these impacts. For far too long, neighborhoods like the southeast side, Little Village, Pilsen, McKinley Park, Inglewood, Alkell Gardens have been overburdened with pollution. These are the same communities with the highest rates of asthma, cancer, and respiratory illnesses. This is environmental racism in action. Our communities already know the health impacts because we live it day in and day out. I personally have had multiple family members pass away from cancer, and there is no doubt in my mind, living in Little Village, that living next to coal plants and the heavy truck pollution was a contributor to the reality of what I experienced. And my story and experience is no different from many members in my community. It no longer is if our children or loved ones will have health impacts like asthma, but a matter of when. I firsthand am exposed to high level of diesel pollution in my community in Pilsen, and the need for air purifiers is a reality of many folks who need to, who are asking for clean air and the ability to leave their homes without fearing of the health impacts of just living their daily lives. Today, according to a study conducted by the Respiratory Health Association, Illinois ranks fifth among all states with the highest number of deaths because of diesel pollution and pollutants like PM 2.5. And today, we're calling on you as folks who are responsible to your constituents, responsible for folks living here in Chicago, to act now. My experience doesn't even compare to the communities who live within industrial zones and for those advocating for decades to address the industrial legacies that continue to impact the lives of our Chicago residents. We are calling on the city council to pass the ordinance and put an end to the policies that have sacrificed our communities. No more delays, no more excuses. This is about our survival. The time to act is now. Please support the Hazel M. Johnson Ordinance upon introduction. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker this morning is Nancy Quintana. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have time to sign off for the public comment period.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. That concludes our public comment period. This is a section of the meeting for our resolutions. Before we attend to those resolutions, we do have four acknowledgements. The first one being by Alder Mosley. Would like to recognize Leila Kelly, a hero from Perspectives Charter School. Chair recognizes Alderman Mosley.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. March 4.
It's on.
March 4. A high school in my ward suffered a shooting, being shot right at drop-off time. I'm thankful that today. I'm thankful that they are okay. I'm thankful for the PE teacher who taught students the lifesaving measures, and I'm thankful for the student that learned the lesson and used it to help their schoolmates' life. To that student, I want you to know that you are a hero, that you saved a life. And to my colleagues in this body, I ask for your help, because today, guns are still too accessible in this city. And although a gun shop has closed that has been notorious for allowing guns to fall into the wrong hands, we have to do more. Yes, we have to work on the people's plan to make sure that Chicago is safer, but we also have also have to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to have these things work together. For me, that means that we have to have a gunshot detection system that helps our pod cameras to get concrete evidence to solve crimes, to deter them from being committed in the future. Yes, to me, that means that we have to pass the peace book here in the city of Chicago, a plan that has been worked on youth to solve violence of youth, and who better to know than youth? And yes, that does mean that we have to come together and invest in more to make sure that we have an office that has the resources to convene the full force of the city and to one effort against gun violence, whether that's an office of violence prevention or something that we see that solves this together. It is not normal for the heroic acts that the student took, but I'm thankful that they fought, they found the courage to do so. I impress upon my colleagues here that we find that same courage to protect Chicago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Moore would like to recognize the 8th Infantry National Guard's 50th Anniversary and Benny Henry's 70th Birthday. Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'm not going to read this whole proclamation, but we just want to, definitely, if the 8th Infantry would stand up, the 8th Infantry Illinois National Guard Association was established on March 21, 1975, for the charitable and educational purpose to promote the history and legacy of the 8th Infantry Regiment of the Illinois National Guard and serve as Q and service members and their families. The 8th Infantry Regiment was born out of the colored militiamen across Illinois who banded together to serve their communities and state and was not officially abducted into the Illinois State Militia until 1878 as the 16th Battalion with its headquarters in Chicago. And, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you so much for putting this proclamation together to honor them. And so you all, please stand up, and thank you so much for your service. Would you all give them a round of applause, please?
Thank you, Alderman Moore. Ald, yes, thank you again. So Alder Woman Harris would like to... Oh, there's Benny as well. Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. All right, very well. Thank you.
Mr. Benny Henry would please stand and his family and members of the support group. The reason why we're honoring Mr. Henry today is his 70th birthday. And bring him applause. You can clap to that. But we're celebrating on his birthday, the fact that he was born. He has helped so many of our young people with the support group, started with, I believe it was him, Tim Hardaway, and I think Anthony Walker, whatever, Antoine Walker, who played for the Boston Celtics and somebody else. I think he went to that school called CVS. I don't know. But anyway, the, oh, he went to Mount Carmel? Okay. But the great thing about this is that over, over, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of students have been helped throughout the city of Chicago. I have some mentees that I work with now in Miami, working with major Fortune 500 companies, all doing great things because of the work that Benny has done with our young people. And we just did not want this day to pass without celebrating him and his 70th birthday and the work that he's done. He has worked with so many Aldermen across this city and so many different communities. And Benny, we love you, man. We just want to thank you, thank you, thank you. Happy birthday.
I thank you again, Alderman Moore, for those acknowledgements. And now Alder Woman Harris would like to recognize the Olive Harvey Girls, sorry, Women's, the Olive Harvey Women's Basketball Team, the Lady Panthers. The recognition as the NJCAA Region Four D1 Champions. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am proud to acknowledge the Olive Harvey College Lady Panthers and President Kimberly Hollinsworth, Robert Fletcher, who's the athletic director, and the wonderful coach, Jeff Diller, for working with our young women. This remarkable team made history and becoming the NJCAA Region Four One Champions with an incredible record of 32 to 1. They was out there killing it, killing it, girls, killing it. Their hard work, determination, and teamwork have propelled them to the North Central District's Championship, where they will face off against North Dakota State College. This is an incredible accomplishment, and it speaks to the dedication and the excellence of our student athletes, coaches, and supporters. As we celebrate Women's History Month, the Lady Panthers are a shining example of what can be achieved through perseverance and teamwork. So please join me in congratulating the Lady Panthers for their historic achievement. Let's continue to cheer them on as they head to the championship game. Go Lady Panthers! If, again, if Coach Diller could stand, if Principal Hollinsworth is still here, and the athletic director, Robert Fletcher, could they please stand and wave your hand? Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Chairwoman. All right, there we go. Simmer down here, because I think the next one, I'm sure that Alderman Mitchell is going to appreciate, because now Alderman Robinson would like to recognize the Kenwood Academy Girls Basketball Team as the IHSA State Champions.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I'm not for sure that I will be able to...
There they are. The chair rec, I don't know how many times they beat Simeon Alderman Moore. Okay. All right. Maybe we'll come back to order, come back to order. Chair recognizes Alderman Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I'm not for sure I'll be able to cheer like Chairwoman Harris this morning, but I want to congratulate the Kenwood Girls Basketball Team for a stellar performance, not only on the basketball court, but also in the classroom. I also want to congratulate Coach Andre Lewis. Welcome back, Coach. Congrats. Thank you very much. Again, ladies, job well done, particularly as we celebrate Women's History Month. Ladies, you all are history makers. God bless you and congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Robinson. Now we have four resolutions today honoring the Central Region of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority. We'll be honoring Commissioner Jamie Reed. We'll be honoring Women's History Month and honoring the life of Chandra Libby. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules to allow for the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. In the interest of respecting people's time, we will forego the reading of the resolutions and go straight to the remarks from City Council members. And again, our first resolution is honoring the Central Region of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a member of the first and finest organization, I am delighted to honor our sisters in service for their 100th Central Region Centennial Celebration. Right here in the city of Chicago, for 100 years, ladies, you have been the captivating Central Region, has been a standard for scholarship, service, and sisterhood, rooted in action and not just aspiration. I have to extend in heartfelt congratulations to our Madam Central Regional Director, Colton. Can we celebrate her? For ensuring that the Central Region remains a beacon of progress and impact. As we gather here in Chicago for this momentous occasion, we thank you for your organization's mission of greater service and greater progress. I have to celebrate our elected officials, especially the best city treasurer this side of heaven, and that is Melissa Conyers-Urbin, Congresswoman Robin Kelly, Madam Director of the Illinois Black Caucus Foundation, and that is Tiffany Hightower, Mother Carolyn Palmer, who is not here, and I have to shout out to every Sigma Gamma Rho in the city of Chicago. And just a few, there is a business owned by four Sigma Gamma Rho's in the Chicagoland area, and that is the Royal B Show. So shout out to Siobhan, and then I've got some Sigma Gamma Rho's all the way in Conway, Arkansas, that's celebrating with you all, and that is Shakira Carter. And not only is she my favorite singer, but she's a big sister to me, and that is Miss Kelly Price, the greatest singer in the industry, who will be celebrating 20 years of service on next year. So God bless you. Thank you, Central Regional, Central Region, for celebrating here in the city of Chicago. You could have gone to Indiana, but you chose to be right here at home. We say God bless you and congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suspend the rules to allow the treasurer to speak on her lovely organization, and then I'd like to come behind her, but I'm suspending the rules if the body will allow me to allow the...
Leave from the body. Leave is granted. Madam Treasurer.
Gamma Rho, and we're here to show the best of Sigma Gamma Rho, we're the women. Good morning, good morning to our illustrious mayor, Brandon Johnson, and honorable members of the Chicago City Council. It is a great honor to stand before you as we celebrate a historic milestone, 100 years of Sigma Gamma Rho's Central Region. This centennial is particularly meaningful as our region chose, as Alder Woman Coleman stated, Chicago as the whole city of this once-in-a-lifetime celebration. Our sorority's traveled from across the Midwest, Indiana, Iowa, Kansas, Kentucky, Michigan, Missouri, Minnesota, Nebraska, North Dakota, South Dakota, Ohio, Wisconsin, and beyond to be here with us. And as Treasurer of Chicago, I am peacock proud to see that our city was chosen as the destination for this significant occasion. Our sorority's are investing in Chicago this week and weekend, and you'll see the signature blue and gold throughout the city everywhere. From the McCormick Place, where most of our events will be held this week, to Navy Pier, where our life members cruise, and across the many hotels, restaurants, and businesses, the city will feel this celebration citywide. And why Chicago? Well, as our illustrious mayor would say, Chicago is the greatest. I'll let him finish that statement later. I would also like to take a moment, as stated very eloquently by Alder Woman Coleman, to acknowledge our Central Region President, Naeed Colton. But also, please stand, Madam Sentakdees. And her leadership has elevated the Central Region to a time such as this. But we also do have two past presidents. We mentioned Tiffany Hightower, but someone also who was so special to me was my advisor when I started in this organization, Tawanna Ingram, all the way from Missouri here with us as well. Now, many of you in this room, you know who I am, but not necessarily where I come from. I joined Sigma Gamma Rho 29 years ago. I know I look just 29, but as a first-generation college student, like many Black and Brown students even today, and I am immensely grateful for the unwavering sisterhood and support that I have received from this incredible organization. And when I look around this room, I see the strength of sisterhood, the strength of this organization, the strength of leadership. That is what you receive when you see members of Sigma Gamma Rho. And so, and Mayor, as I take my seat, as we think about the seven courageous Black women that started this organization in a predominantly white university in Indiana, at Butler University, we are encouraged when we see you, Mayor, a Black man, a Black father, as Mayor of the third-largest city of this country. There is no way we can overlook the challenges that you face daily, but you remind us that we're built for this. And so, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, especially that great Alderman of the 28th Ward. Thank you, Alder Woman Stephanie Coleman of the 16th Ward, who always celebrates Black people, our community, and all organizations that really represent us. Thank you, Alder Woman Michelle Harris, for this opportunity. And again, thank you all for allowing me a moment to celebrate my organization.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Chairwoman Harris.
Mr. President, I rise to support this resolution, and I couldn't be prouder of our city treasurer and being part of a wonderful organization that celebrates women and 100 years of service. So I also would be remiss if I did not acknowledge my very own, as I call it, Central Regional Director, Colton. So I couldn't be prouder of you, my 8th Ward residents. Way, girl, because you the urness. What a wonderful leader you are, and I am so proud of you to be here at this place and to be part of your organization's history. So I thank you, and I thank all the ladies, Sigma Gamma Rho, for their commitment to service and doing wonderful things in communities of color. Thank you, ladies, for everything that you do for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alder Woman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. Many of you have heard me talk about in the past my own personal experience with the Greek system and the non-traditional Greek system. I also went to a school in Indiana that was predominantly white, Indiana University, where I, along with six other women, helped to found an Asian-American sorority. And it was through the support and sisterhood of the Black Greek organizations that we were able to find our way. And actually, three of my favorite Sigma Gamma Rho's are Asian-American. From Ball State University. I mentioned this because while you're, while you're a Black Greek organization, you are open to everybody. And if you share values and, and commitment to each other, the doors are open for that. So I thank you for the 100 years of service that you're acknowledging, that you did choose Chicago, and really honor your work and your presence to you, Madam Treasurer, of course, and to my fellow Dolphin, Lisa Cooper, who's also in the box today. Congratulations, all the best, and to another 100 years of sisterhood and service. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President.
First, I would like to be recognized for this morning.
Please add Alderman Curtis to the quorum roll call.
Thank you. Thank you all. So riled to support this, support this resolution to congratulate the successful, beautiful women of Sigma Gamma Row. I had the pleasure of working alongside so many of you, especially on a lot of activities where I saw you raise and support many young women as they go through their trials and tribulations and to make them successful. So thank you for all that you do, and you could always, again, I see a lot of my constituents here, and I love to get involved with a lot of activities that you guys do. So you always can depend on 18th Ward also to be successful and help raise our young women to become successful. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Unless anyone else wishes to speak, I have Alderman Moore and Chairwoman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my seatmate, Alderman Coleman, recognized several important people that was important to me, including Carolyn Palmer, who is not present here today, but also I want to recognize Dr. Valeria Gates, who's special to me, who is not here today, but also the people that are here today. And they're serving, one of them, a couple of them are servants who protect our streets that we've worked with, and that's Commander Ward. Where you at, baby? Stand up. And one, you just did a resolution for Mr. President on her retirement. Officer Claude Atnight, where you at, dear? Did she leave? She had left, but she was here. And then, but there are two other people that's here that's near to me because, one, from childhood, living in Robert Taylor Homes growing up, but was also a teacher in CPS and a valuable asset to our students at CPS, and that's Toni Straight, and she's still here. Stand up, Toni. That's my sister from another mother, but she's also a shipwright, coming up under Reverend Clay Evans and serving at fellowship. And then another young lady who, on the yard at West Illinois University, we just had a great time, and I love her so much. Debbie, please stand up and be recognized. And just, you know, when you have people that you've grown up with to help do your formidable years, don't ask them nothing about me, because I don't want no blackmailing going on. And so, I just appreciate the service that you all give, and I appreciate you all coming out to our regression community, different chapters, serving our youth, whether it's back to school or just doing mentoring. That is huge, and it goes a long way. So thank you all so much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to be associated with this resolution. Didn't want you all to come into the city of Chicago and not know that the Sororice of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated celebrate your 100th anniversary today. I want to acknowledge President, Madam President Colton. I also want to acknowledge our illustrious City Treasurer, Melissa Conyers Irving. And I know a couple of, a few of y'all, but I want to acknowledge Toni Straight from my neck of the woods and Carolyn Palmer, also someone that I've known in my past, in my current life, is a former member of my church. You know, there's power in the sisterhood. And so, I want to just encourage you that this is going to be a tough four years or more, that we have to stick together, all of us, in this D9 sorority and fraternity club that we're in, and to continue to provide service to the people that we represent and who live in our communities. God bless every single one of you, and happy 100th anniversary.
Well, well, the Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me this opportunity to the women of Sigma Gamma Row. We definitely appreciate the work that you all are doing. I specifically want to talk about the work of the Theta Chi Sigma Chapter, working on the West Side of Chicago, and your Basilisk, who is also doubles as our commander in the 11th District, Commander Ward. For the, for the work that they're doing with young people in our communities, this past week or so, they had a symposium at the Elaine Lock Charter School in the ward where they were working with over 100 young people. And that is the work at the organization that people don't see. They see a lot of the other things that are happening, but the work that they're doing with the youth, especially on the West Side of Chicago, is to be commended. And I too have been by marriage brought into this thing. So I have, and now my, no choice, you're absolutely correct. My daughter is now part of, is part of the Rosebud Club. And so, we truly appreciate as they are working with our young women. My daughter's Aiden can work her way all the way up through being a member of Full Fledged, member of the sorority. I have a young cousin that's a Roar. So again, we appreciate the work that you all are doing with our young people, especially our young women, as they need to see good role models. And quite frankly, the first people that we've generally talked to that had college experience were our teachers in schools. And most of us who went to CPS, most of our teachers, especially our Black teachers, were members of the D9 organizations. And they always instilled something greater in us than we would have not otherwise been able to receive. So thank you for your service. Thank you for all that you do. Again, thank you for, I'll get some sleep tonight. So thank you much. God bless you.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, we want to thank Commander Denise Ward for your leadership. One of the tougher parts of the city of Chicago, I know she's a South Sider, but we claim her on the West Side as well. Tiffany Hightower, thank you for your leadership over the years, doing so much work for our communities. Denise Merritt and Dr. Alana Jackson, Jessica Thomas, Keisha Harris, Ms. Thomas. We already acknowledged again, Ms. Debbie Wilborn, Lisa Cooper, Dr. Angel Leek Worthy, Tawana Ingram, Taylor Boaz, Donnie Walker, Bonita Herring, and of course, our Madam President Colton, and of course, our esteemed Treasurer, Melissa Conyers Irving. Since its founding in 1925 by these incredible Black women educators at Butler University, Sigma Gamma Row Sorority Central Region has worked to uplift the community through sisterhood, leadership, and service. Sigma Gamma Row has champion initiatives and programs aimed at improving the maternal and infant health outcomes, fostering the growth of young women and supporting quality education and workforce opportunities within the Black community. Today, the Sigma Gamma Row Sorority Central Region has expanded to 43 graduate chapters and 56 undergraduate chapters across the country, around the world. So I'm very proud to recognize and celebrate this incredible milestone. Happy 100th anniversary to Sigma Gamma Row Sorority Central Region. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage in the Yonabus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Congratulations again. Chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to be added to the roll.
Mr. Clerk, please add Alderman Hall to the roll call. Quorum, please. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to be added to the roll.
Very well. Mr. Clerk, please add Alderwoman Nicole Lee to the quorum roll call. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Clay.
Chair, I'd also like to be added to the roll.
Very well. Mr. Clerk, could you please add Alderwoman Clay to the quorum roll call? Our next resolution is honoring Commissioner Jamie Reed on an esteemed career as the aviation commissioner and many other duties. Chair recognizes Alderman Matt O'Shea. The Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Try to get through this without crying, because this commissioner is not only a commissioner, but she's my friend. After coming out of the private sector, my first public sector job was as an accountant with the Department of Aviation. And that was around the same time that Commissioner Reed was starting in customer service, not nearly making the salary that we making right now, but just because of the love of what she wanted to do and serve our residents coming through O'Hare. She was at that time under one of the best in the country commissioners, and Mary Rose Lonie. People around the country wanted to talk and be around Mary Rose Lonie to learn how to run aviation. And, but this was Mary Rose Lonie, and I got to be honest, what she didn't like was the politics. And she dealt with that, even under that administration at that time, because there were people there who wanted to keep control over aviation. They didn't even want the mayor to run aviation. I'm telling you this now. I'm telling you what I know. And they had so much control over there that Mary Rose Lonie, instead of selling out, she had to leave. She had to leave because she was a person of integrity. As you rolled down the years, Commissioner Reed began to serve in several different departments at the city. She went to school, she got a law degree, she did all of those things while working full-time. But one thing that I admired about her, and it's something that I said, when you go to school, don't nobody have to own you. When you go to school, you don't have to do things just to do it. You can, you can have a level of commitment, but you don't have to do anything wrong or unethical. And she always told me, as we went through, because I'm on my third mayor right now. She on her fifth or sixth one. But she always told me, she said, Alderman, whoever mayor was coming in, if they want me to leave, I'll leave because I serve at the behest of that mayor, and I'll leave graciously. And she said, but what I'll never do, I'll always do things with integrity, and I'll do it with character. And I promise you, that's what she did. She worked hard to make sure that we had equity, not only in procurement, when she was head of procurement, but also at the Department of Aviation, making sure that Black people got a piece of the pie. Making sure that happened. And, 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 and she know, and I didn't have to get on her neck, I just had to talk to her. I just had to say, this is what's going on, because sometimes things can be so big, you can't see everything. It's Alderman, we don't see everything. So we have to bring things to people's attention. And anytime I brought something to her attention, she did it. Because of Jamie Reed, we helped to get the first Black person to do an air cargo facility on airside here in the United States of America. I remember that conversation, because we were on that call together and asked the developer, or whatever his title was, who was building, do you, have you ever hired any Black people? Do any Black people around the country do this? He said, no, we've never hired it. Don't nobody Black know how to do it? They don't have the capacity. What we say, joint venture, make sure somebody gets some capacity. Do whatever you have to do, and that's what happened. And so, but you have to have somebody at the top that's willing to help make it happen. Jamie, you are just exceptional. I'm for one, going to miss you so much. We've worked together since 1998, baby. Since 1998. And you was down there from where I went to school by, in West Illinois University, down from that area, and we had that connection. And so, I just, I just love you. I love your family, your husband has stood by you, let you do what you need to do. And, 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 and you've not only done that, you've gone out, you've adopted children, you've done great things to add value to our, not only our city, but to this country. Right now, the people, their aviation leaders across the country look to Jamie Reed, just like they did with Mary Rose Lonie. They call and ask you questions of how to best run their airports around this country. I ain't telling you what I heard, I'm telling you what I know. And so, I appreciate you for your service. Thank you. I thank you, your family, for sharing us, sharing you with us, and we're always going to have a relationship well beyond this business. I love you so much. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise wholeheartedly to support this resolution. This is a bitter, bittersweet pill to swallow. Jamie, you are nothing short of amazing. Every department that you have went to, you have led with integrity. And, and I can tell you, you are probably one of the only commissioners, when you were at procurement, that was intentional, intentional about trying to get African-Americans contracts. Because you looked at those numbers and you said, this is totally unacceptable. And you know, we've been fighting day in and day out to try to get those numbers up to where they're at least presentable, and they're still not presentable. But you laid the foundation to where we can at least start the ball rolling to get those numbers up. And, you know, this city is going to miss you immensely. Nobody can replace Jamie Reed. Nobody. Don't even try it, don't even think about it, because it can't happen. You have an amazing family, your husband, maybe now you can have a little time to go hunting a little more, because he is a hunter, and we talk about hunting all the time. But again, I mean, we all love you, we're going to miss you, and you are really to be commended for the job that you have done to serve as a public servant for this city of Chicago. So thank you so much, and we do love you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lasparra.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Commissioner Reed, I, I didn't have the opportunity to serve with you as long as some of the previous speakers. I mainly knew you from your role with the Department of Aviation. And there's a lot of professionalism in City Hall, there's a lot of character and integrity. I've never known anyone who led with as much enthusiasm and passion for the space that you were in as you did. I, I remember the first conference room that you brought me into, my first year in office, to talk about your work. I was genuinely bowled over, but not only your intelligence and your curiosity, but your enthusiasm for the work that you were doing. I hope I find ways to carry that with me in my work life in this space. You genuinely inspire me and encourage me to continue to find ways to be curious and enthusiastic. Thank you for all of them. Thank you, and I, I hope whoever takes your role after you wears that mantle proudly and understands what we expect in terms of just that, that level of passion and leadership that you've always brought to this work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wagasback.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jamie, it's a real shame that we're losing you, all of your institutional knowledge, which I, I know you imparted on those that you work with at the airport and every body that you worked with. But we will miss your expertise, and I think your steadfast determination in representing our city in the best way possible. And I know that every time I saw you, whether it was here in the council, out at the airport... And I know that every time I saw you, whether it was here in the council, out at the airports, or doing the work with investors, you you were steadfast in your representation of the city, and that will be missed. But hopefully, we'll cross paths again as we are either at the airport, at City Hall, or wherever it might be. And I hope you continue in all the work that you've learned from to provide whatever you can, provide that knowledge to the city so that we can keep moving forward. Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes older woman Silverstein.
Thank you. I too stand in support of this resolution. Jamie, we're really gonna miss you here. I think all of us are really sad today, and it's a sad day for the city of Chicago. I've enjoyed working together with you, you are truly amazing. And I know there's gonna be a lot of loving words to you, so I'm just echoing all of the words that you've already heard and will continue to hear as we go through this room. And I just want to wish you the very, very best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jamie, you are really nice. There's no words I could even say right now to express how I feel. I think the city of Chicago is again losing a gem. You've been around, no matter what department you was in, you've done the best. You raised a lot of people to be the best. Since being Vice Chairman of Aviation, you allowed me to do whatever I wanted to do. I brought so many kids to the airports, and and you were right with us, talking to them about the Department of Aviation and how to be the best that they could be. If you want to see a real leader, this is a real leader. I know everyone has their season in their life. And I just wish you the best in this season and your next season. Don't know what that is right now, I've been trying to call you for the last month. Because I was so mad, I was so angry because you were leaving. But again, after all of these years, you deserve that break also. Thank you so much for sharing her with us. You've been a great leader. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to support this resolution. Jamie, nobody can do it like you. You are truly an original. And I thank you, and I thank you for walking me through procurement, for making me feel comfortable with everything that I ever had to vote on as it related to procurement, for answering all the questions and getting, and walking me through some of these processes. So I can't thank you enough for doing that. And then you one of the only people I know that could get me to O'Hare Airport without traveling and getting on a plane. So I thank you for doing that. Now, I thought that was super cool for you to invite me out, show me around, and it meant a lot to me. Mike, I gotta say thank you because you have allowed Jamie to operate in a sphere, be gone untold hours around the clock. And she is so lucky and fortunate to have you in her life, because you have been her support system and her crutch through everything that she's been through. So as a person looking on the outside, looking in, thank you for allowing her to do that. And poor Gisele is like gonna be so happy to get her mommy back. So thank you again, Jamie. Thank you for giving back to the city of Chicago and making us and our airport a first-class place. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jamie, I too stand in support of your decision to retire. At a time when you need to know when to hold and know when to fold. And I guess you don't realize your time is now, but you have truly been a jewel for the city of Chicago from the time that I've been here. Your presence has been felt all over. I was really upset when you left procurement and went to aviation, because we were just beginning to make some progress. And I remember you holding our hands and making sure that we were going to be doing better. And I know you know what you're doing, I know you know the work. It's just gonna be a void. I feel somewhat not secure at this point, but hoping that we'll overcome that as well, because things do change and people do move on. So I want to wish you a healthy and a great retirement. Enjoy your time while you have it. Thirty years of giving your life, it's truly been a long time to the people and doing everything in your power to do the best you could do each and every day. We don't take that lightly, but there's a time to step back. So congratulations and enjoy. You're in the family, thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand to be associated with this resolution. I have the grand privilege of being Commissioner Ree's alderperson. Both Commissioner Ree and her family chose Humboldt Park to be their home, and I cannot be more proud to have Commissioner Ree as a constituent. Mike, first, I want to thank you. It is not easy sharing someone as brilliant, talented, with a whole lot of capacity like Commissioner Ree with the city of Chicago. For thirty years, she has made our city better. And I know the impact that that can have on a home. And so as as much as Commissioner Ree is deserving of this retirement, you are deserving of this retirement. And Gisele, thank you for standing in the box with your mom. You get to have mom back at home, she's just spent a lot of time with you. And I'm also grateful for how you've shared your mom, not just with the 26th Ward, but the entire city of Chicago. And to be quite honest, you've shared your mom with the world. O'Hare is the most frequented airport in the nation, and your mom was a part of that. Commissioner, thank you for being a leader. Not just running both of our airports, but in your time as a Chief of Staff, in your time as a procurement officer, really thinking about black and brown communities across the city and the role that we can play in building a great city. Thank you for making our airports the most competitive in the nation. I mean, for two consecutive years, we have gotten the most competitive grants under the Biden administration because of your leadership. Expanding Terminal Five and adding all of the things that both O'Hare and Midway deserve. I mean, we get the luxury of having some of the best airports because of the vision and your leadership. Look, whoever succeeds you, Commissioner, has big shoes to fill. And I look forward to the transition. I am thankful that you're sticking around for a little bit for that transition. But as a constituent of the 26th Ward, I'm excited to see what you do next, and I'm excited to champion anything that you take on. Thank you for all of your work, and thank you for the legacy that you've left behind.
Thank you, Alder Fuentes. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Ree, everything you've touched in this city's turned to gold, literally. Everything you've touched is better because of you, and it's because of a work ethic that you have. I mean, you, every time you show up to our office downtown, at O'Hare, you've done it all with this, this, we got this mentality, and it's not that bad, we'll get through this. And your style of communication is second to none. You're gonna be missed. You have made O'Hare better since the day you got there. You've made everything better since the day down here even. You're gonna be missed. I can't thank you enough for the communication that you gave our office. Always, always a line of openness for communication. Please enjoy everything you do from here on out. Enjoy your family as much as you possibly can. Don't go get five other jobs, just retire for a while, sit back, reevaluate, and then move on, but just enjoy everything you got in front of you. So you're gonna be missed. Love you to death. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes older woman Taylor.
Hey, Jamie. You made us fall in love with the airport all over again. A place of chaos, if you went to it maybe fifteen or twenty years ago, you're like, I'm never traveling again. And so you are truly what we call one of our white allies. Because you know, people say they're your ally, and they pretend they won't write for you, but you showed us in every way of that. Looking at that Brown Sugar Bakery is now in one of our airports, and Lord knows, we love, love Brown Sugar Bakery. And so to, for you to make sure that black folks got an opportunity to be in those spaces, which too often, we know when we go to the airport, we just work there. We don't own there, we don't have our businesses there, we're not able to add our little spin on the airport. You made sure that happened, and I just appreciate you for it. To your baby girl, your mom is your shero. You don't gotta look further, you can look right at your mom. Because she truly is what we call an ally. You will be missed, and I'm with Alderman Napolitano. Don't run, don't you come back here, don't you, don't you find another spot and start working with this. You got a way now, go ahead now. Too often, y'all will find somewhere else to go, don't, don't do it to yourself. Enjoy your family, and thank you, Ms. Jamie.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Chairman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to be associated with this resolution as well. Jamie has been the epitome of a public servant. And prior to me being elected, I worked closely with her in an advocacy organization to put forward legislation that's talked about making sure that Chicago, local Chicago firms were benefiting from public procurement opportunities. Worked closely with her on the Small Business Initiative, worked closely with her on the Veteran Business Enterprise Program. I mention all that because she understands the value of minority women, veteran-owned firms, and what it means to our economy. Understanding that local firms are the ones who pay local taxes and employ locally. And so it was, it was a great honor to work with you and strategize about how to get our local economy going. And I know that you're gonna be retiring, and it's well worth, you've earned it. But I know that contrary to what my, what my colleagues are saying, I would say that your knowledge in government is gonna allow you to pick and choose how you enjoy that retirement, whether it's part-time consulting, having that ability to finally go on a vacation with your family for a long extended time. And so really happy to have partnered with you throughout my career, whether it was outside as an advocate or in his insight internally as a legislator, to put forward solutions. And that's the one thing I appreciated about you, is that every time we brought issues to you or recommendations, it was not a no. It was a no, but let's try to figure this out. And I think that's what we're missing in local government, is when we get too many attorneys in the room and they're so risk averse, and are always finding ways to, to say no. You've always had the opposite approach, and understanding that we wanted to make sure that Chicago, the local firms were participating on these mega regional projects like O'Hare, as well as with DOT when you were procurement. So again, well deserved. Thank you for your service of over three decades, and looking forward to continue working with you on your next endeavor. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Chairman Rodriguez.
Mayor Johnson, thank you. To Jamie Ree, I rise to join the chorus of accolades. I gotta say, going off of Alderman Moore's words earlier, you know, I remember the first meeting where I had you in front of me, and I brought up the issue of equity in the Latino community. And everything I asked for as far as transparency and engagement, you gave back and more. I'm just utterly impressed by your professionalism, your ability to get things done, your ability to juggle knives at many times, you know? Midway Airport, O'Hare Airport, and all that in between as far as that endeavor, it's no small task. You handled it with the utmost class, respect, dignity, and you know, you, you burnt the midnight oil getting the job done. To your family, you know, got to meet you both earlier. I know your daughter's ready for this to be done with, I promise I'll be done very soon here. Thank you so much for all of your hard work and everything you've done for the great city. You've left a legacy that will be felt by future generations. Thank you so much for all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Chairman Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I join, I'd say, all of our colleagues in really thanking you for your service, Commissioner Ree. It is rare in government that we see somebody with a level of exuberance, energy, and passion that you bring every single minute of the day. And it's something when we first met, just completely took me by surprise in a good way. I think people think of government workers as kind of just bureaucrats with their head down, but the level of energy that you bring is more than commendable. But there's another part of it that I think is, I need to mention. I've never seen a team be equally as passionate and happy and joy with their leadership. There's never been a moment I've talked to anyone who was at any of the airports or part of the team, where I didn't feel that exact same energy. And that speaks to just the culture of management that you've helped put together. The airports aren't just a department. The aviation isn't just a department, it is its own municipal government. It is one that is under the purview of the federal government in a way that is different from any other department in the city of Chicago. So to be able to manage that with that same level of energy and the expertise, not only are we gonna miss you, there are many of us who are legit concerned about what comes next. The shoes that people are gonna have to fill are larger than the airports here in the city. It's gonna be that hard, and so we can't thank you enough. And that's without even mentioning the amount of time in procurement. So you were procurement before I was even in office. But when we were, you know, being part of the Committee on Immigrant Refugee Rights, watching how at the time, the current chief of procurement wasn't moving in the way that some of us believe they should have been moving, to be able to talk to you about what was done prior and how quickly things could have been moving, that amount of expertise was invaluable. And so I, you deserve all the breaks, all the time off, all the time to live and be a human and live your best chapter in life after your service, because you've done more in that time than many can say. And so I thank you, the city of Chicago thanks you, and whatever you need from us, you let us know. Thank you so much. Thank you, President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to join the tidal wave of support and praise. And it's a challenge actually, being one of the final speakers, to say something that hasn't already been said about your performance.
You're not the final one of them.
I'm not the final?
There's a lot of people.
I'll make it even harder for those, those who are coming behind me. As a member of the Aviation Committee, I'm aware of your professional capabilities and your accomplishments, as we all are. And as your personal friend, I'm aware of your character. My colleague mentioned what a great mom you are, our kids have shared birthday parties together. And Jamie, you are just an awesome human being from top to bottom. Everything you've done, everything you've stood for throughout the course of your life, throughout the course of your professional career, that led you to this moment when your colleagues just joined in praising you and honoring you and paying a due tribute for all you've accomplished. And if I may, I just want to share one, one brief personal story that you shared with me, I hope you don't mind. And it hearkens back to when you were a young girl and just embarking on your professional career, and you went to O'Hare Airport, and it occurred to you that at that moment, you hadn't yet been on a plane yet. But there you were at O'Hare Airport, and the journey that your life has taken from that moment, those humble beginnings to this, to where you are today. One of the nation's, if not the world's, leading experts on aviation management. And everything that you have accomplished on behalf of the city of Chicago in all the different capacities that you've had, going back to procurement and even beyond that, have really served you well and have certainly served the city that you love even better. And that's what this moment of gratitude is all about, is to thank you for everything you've done, for the community that you love, for the city that you serve, for the family that you had. I know this won't be the last we see of Jamie Ree, I certainly hope it isn't. You've got so much more to give, because that's who you are. Proud to be your colleague, and even prouder to be your friend. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. The chair recognizes older woman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Ree, first to Gisele and Mike, I echo my colleagues' sentiments. I look forward to the additional time that you are going to have with one of the most important people in your lives, I'm sure. Jamie, I do not echo the sentiments of a lot of my colleagues on telling you to run and go and enjoy your time and do that. When I first met you, I When I first met you, I, I'll agree with my colleague Alderman Vasquez, the same, right? Total same, like, oh my God, what an amazing person. I also echo comments here of my colleague Alderman Viegas on, on just your leadership and your expertise. And I'm sitting here and I'm listening to everybody and I'm not gonna try and make you cry like my colleague David Moore over here, but I'm afraid, I'm sad, I am upset that we are losing you. I don't know who's gonna replace you. You're irreplaceable. The mark that you've left on this city, right, is legacy. Maybe we'll get a terminal named after you at some point, right? But also, I'm not letting you go. So by the way, this is, this is like crunch time for our city. As much as you've accomplished, like I hope my colleagues know and Mr. President, like this is crunch time. You are a top talent. Your, your expertise, your knowledge, your lived experience, your love of the city of Chicago, right? Like you love this city, you love the people in this city, and that was evident to me from the very first time I met you. And when I meet people, whether they're in our, our public service or in my community who love Chicago the way that you do, and when I especially meet people in our professional spaces who lead the way you do, right? My colleagues are right, like your team is the best. They're the best because you're the best, right? So I don't know who's going to replace you, but I'm gonna still call you. Your city still needs you. I don't know how we let her get away, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how we let her get away, we shouldn't have. We, we need your talent, we need your expertise more than ever. We don't know what our federal environment's gonna be. And, and yes, like my colleague said, the airport's like a whole municipal government. It's a corporation, it's a municipality, right? And also you deal with federal rules, guidelines and funding in a way that people don't just, you don't just throw somebody into that. So whoever is appointed next, we're gonna have some tough questions for them. And I hope that you, I hear you, I know you're gonna make yourself available to help them out, but I'll say, you know, I know it's your choice to go, but it's, it's a, it's a shame on us for, for not, for not finding a way to keep you. It's a shame on us and we are going to be worse off because of it. You've got this team, so I'm gonna appeal to your team as well. Please stay, continue to stay and support whoever that next leader is. Call us, talk to us, share with us what you need. I think you know the love and respect that we've had for Commissioner Ree. That translates to all of you. We wanna hear from you, we wanna support you, and we don't wanna see what oftentimes happens, which is when someone amazing leaves their leadership post. And maybe somebody else who could be amazing comes in, right? It's no, no shade to the new person, but a lot of times we see the, the leadership team go as well. And we can't afford that to happen. And so like honestly, you guys talk to us, let us know what you need. And I certainly will be calling upon you in all of your decades of expertise for help in continuing our work here to make the city of Chicago great. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Now, good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the City Council. Good afternoon, Commissioner, to you and your family. I ran out of candy, I'm sorry. I don't think there's much that can really be added, other than simply saying jenku ye. Jenku ye pan for all that you've done. And I would like to point out that all of Chicago's best leaders got their start on the front line working in an airport. Thank you for those who know. Just seeing if you're awake still. But I will say that Commissioner, to add to the sentiment, that your loyalty to our city, your loyalty to the taxpayers, your loyalty to the mission of lifting Chicago for over three decades is something that cannot, will not, and never can be understated, undervalued, or forgotten. To give those who are here today a reminder of just where we were before your arrival in aviation, we quite literally were chasing your predecessor out the door. Holding hearings, putting her under oath, you remember? Holding her accountable for ignoring communities, ignoring City Council. And you not only went beyond bringing your team, your skills, but you also repaired the damage. You made people believe in the department again. You brought communities, especially on the Southwest, Northwest sides, that were forgotten and, and many, many things that I'm sure my colleague will touch on. They had faith again, because you were not just a leader, but you were the Chicagoan that heard Chicagoans. That cannot be understated enough. As a leader, in, as a city council, and even as a building, we often forget that this is simply about people and it's about showing who comes after us, what is supposed to be the true Chicago values that we wanna leave behind. You are the walking embodiment of those blue stripes and four stars. And it has been the, one of the great honors of my lifetime to get to know you as a friend these last 10 years, to talk about the trials and tribulations of growing families, living life and doing all of that. And I know your husband shares and, and feels the pain and joy and happiness of all that you've encountered, but you've had a family that is 2.7 million strong with you for decades. And I think that a terminal isn't enough to name after you. Maybe that new place that we're building off the expressway in the 41st Ward would be great to be known as the Ree Center, the Jamie Ree Center, just throwing that out there. But God bless you, God bless your family. Thank you for all you do and for all you will continue to do for the city of Chicago and the, the place that you call home and love. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jamie, it's very fitting that we're singing your praises during Women's History Month. You're an inspiration to so many of us, especially your beautiful daughter. We thank you on behalf of all of our residents in the 45th Ward for the service that you have given our city in multiple different roles. But what sticks out to me most is not your professional resume, but what you have done as a person. You've always been very kind, you've always been very generous, you've been very giving with your knowledge, with your experience. You explained things to a newer Aldermen and made things easy for me to explain to my constituents, which I greatly appreciate and my constituents appreciate. So I wish you the very best. I can't say anything more than what my colleagues have already said. You are just a treasure to be able to work with. The fact that you speak like five or six different languages, you're an epitome of a public servant and you should be very proud and your family should be very proud of you, which I'm sure they are. So thank you very much and I wish you the very best in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes older woman Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am also honored to stand in support of this resolution today. For decades, our friend and colleague, Commissioner Ree, has dedicated her career to public service, ensuring our city's aviation system remains one of the most advanced and efficient in the world. And under your guidance, Jamie, our airports have seen unprecedented modernization and expansion. And from your time in procurement to your time in aviation, you've been a tireless advocate for small businesses, minority and women-owned enterprises and local workers. Something really important that you've worked on was providing funding for a number of assist agencies to help diverse businesses within the city, including a first-of-its-kind partnership with the Annexer Center, which helps individuals with disabilities find meaningful opportunities at the airports. I think that's just such a special and important program, and I know it's made a difference in a lot of people's lives. Your leadership has also really focused on sustainability and that, that's helped make O'Hare and Midway leaders and eco-friendly initiatives in the airports, which is also something that's so incredibly important, I know to you and your team, but to also many of us here. And you also, in the industry, you're, you're so recognized as well. I know you're a World Board Member of ACI, and I know that's a really prestigious honor, so kudos to you on that. My deepest gratitude to you, you've been nothing but a tremendous colleague. Your vision, your dedication to the people of this city is just phenomenal. But I just will take a moment of personal privilege and thank you for being a great friend to me and someone that I have looked up to for many years. So best wishes on, on all you do and congratulations to you and your family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too rise to support this resolution. Jamie, congratulations. I wanted to publicly thank you. You inherited an absolute mess when you became the Chair, the Commissioner of Aviation. And it was tense in our, our community. It was very, very tense and residents of the 13th Ward were losing confidence. And you are always an honest broker, and I think that's the ultimate compliment I could pay to any public servant, is you're always an honest broker. So I'm grateful, I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful for the work that you put in, in, in putting the, the train back on the tracks for the, for the good, hardworking people, the Southwest side, that are suffering with the smelly windows. So thank you very much, Jamie. I wish you all the best. Congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jamie, thank you for your years of service. I'm reminded when I first met you, we went to lunch and the thing that struck me was that, you know, people talk about integrity. And, but when the opportunity comes to present itself, I'll never forget, I, I, we introduced you to a young black contractor on the West Side of Chicago, and when we went to pay the bill, you, you said no. I thought I was gonna break in on my brand new American Express card that day, but nonetheless, you, you've always demonstrated your integrity, your way about doing things and trying to solve problems in our city has always been good. And there are a lot of contractors that, that owe a debt of gratitude to the work that you've done, not only in your procurement role, but also expanding that role when you went out to the airport. So again, thank you for your service and your daughter probably would have been better off going to school, cause a lot of times she'd get out of here, she probably could have had a long, better sort of day. But again, thank you for your family, the sacrifices that you have made to keep our city up and going, and wish you the best in this next adventure.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also like to stand in support of this resolution. Jamie, we've been together your whole 30 years. We started together and we've grown together. We've laughed together, we've had many short people jokes, remember that, right? You know, it's always been a pleasure to work with you. I commend your family and I wanna thank you all for sharing her with us. I know you probably are concerned about what is she gonna do with all that energy when she come home, cause she has a lot of energy. Jamie, you have been fantastic. I mean, I've, over the years, even as a procurement officer, you have helped me with so many small businesses. It's not even any big business, just people trying to get into doing business with the city. I mean, you have been so hands-on with so many people to help them learn how to navigate, being able to do business in the city. You have nurtured and mentored so many people. A lot of the folks who came from you have gone on to do procurement in other agencies around this city, this county and this, this state, who have been fantastic. I mean, you have really touched so many people, your legacy will always be felt in aviation. I remember, I remember when I was, at one time, I was the chairman of the Black Caucus, all of us get a turn. And I remember when we were the chairman of the Black Caucus, you came to the caucus and you told us what you was gonna do and how you was gonna do it, and you just left, left us with nothing to say, because after that, you did it all. You took care of people, you were very fair, and you gave everyone an opportunity. I mean, you can go and have a career after this in DEI, you can have a career in aviation, you can have a career in law. I mean, the, the sky's the limit for you because you are fantastic and you have that spirit, that, that, you know, you have that energy that just attracts people to you, right? And, and folks wanna help you because you are so helpful. I just wanna say it's been a pleasure of working with you, it's been a pleasure of growing with you, and I wanna say thank you and God bless you on your next adventure. Congratulations.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes older woman Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Growing up, I would hear this saying, Jason, gotta go and find out where all the bathrooms are down at City Hall. And not too many people know where the bathrooms are down here, but Jamie Ree, I know you know where every bathroom is down here. You know my story and the sacrifices that, that it took to get me here as a forever sweetie, and what the chairman has formed in the bond of sisterhood. But I wanna thank you for the work that you did with then Chairman Viegas and Sawyer and forming the Diversity Working Group, that once a quarter, our predecessors and Alderman Irvin, we meet quarterly with the Black and Latino Caucus, where we are holding this industry accountable and the city accountable for doing business with black and brown people. I don't think you are acknowledged or should, or have been uplifted enough for the work that you did, where it's not just an idea, but it's an actual law that those that come behind us will have to meet and hold those accountable. The women that you've uplifted in this space, and I know that one is listening now crying because you have forced her to get out of comfortable mold and to really learn this industry on the back end side, I wanna thank you for the women you've uplifted. I wanna thank you for the staffers that you've uplifted in the aviation space. You've always been a mama bear, but I know when you became a mother to Jazzy, it was the most important day of your life, other than Marion Ice Mike here. And as Alderman Haddon said, you are truly irreplaceable. I thank you, I love you, I love you for real, but I love Southwest, and so I won't be going to O'Hare as much, but certainly the mark that you have made, oh, my bad, my bad, the, the mark that you have made in this city and the respect that you have across the nation in this space is certainly remarkable. I am so proud to know Jamie Ree. I love you, have fun. And Jazzy, Auntie Stephanie has some snacks, it won't last too long, okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes older woman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution and celebration of you, Jamie Ree. I, I know my colleagues have said many things that I agree with wholeheartedly, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but I do, I would be remiss not to stand on behalf of myself, the 11th Ward, and of course, my dad, who you worked with as well. So another, another elder person here, where you've worked with a couple generations of our family, and your reputation proceeds itself. It really did break the mold with you and in a time when the federal government is tearing down government employees and really doing a great disservice, you, you are a model of what a civil servant is and what it is to dedicate your life to government for the betterment of a city and everybody in it. But let's talk about airports for a minute. I didn't work in the airport, but I did work for United Airlines before I came here. So I have a little bit of an understanding of, of what it takes to, to run an airport. We are, we, we only inhabited one, one and a half of those terminals, you know, they'll get more. But the things that you have to be able to handle and all of the things that are literally out of your control that gets thrown at you, it is literally like playing a game of dodgeball where everybody else has a ball and you don't. So you took the body shots for your head too, and then you managed everything else. I think with, with grace and with such integrity, and we are better off as a city because of the work that you did. To echo Alderman Gardner's sentiments, it's fitting that you're being honored during Women's History Month. Thank you for all of the history that you have contributed to in the city of Chicago. We know that you, you have left an indelible mark. Thank you for all of your service. We love you, we'll miss you, and you know... We'll miss you and, you know, we hope that all of the work that you put into your team at aviation will pay dividends in the legacy that you've left and the things that they will do because they were led by you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Unless there are any other alders that wish to speak, the final two speakers that I have are Old Woman Dow and then Alderman O'Shea has requested to be the last speaker. With that, the chair recognizes Old Woman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. To Jamie, this is really a hard decision. I'm really sorry that you're leaving. When I heard the news, I couldn't even pick up the phone to call you and just let you know how I was feeling about the fact that you were leaving. I want you to know you've been a stellar public servant. I want to thank you for always being accessible, for dealing with me on the numbers and trying to understand the airport and to be a good steward of this, you know, and represent my community on the Aviation Committee under Chairman O'Shea's leadership. It's a committee that I wanted to be on and I've learned so much from being on that committee. I want to say that you surround yourself with excellent staff. And that's hard to do for people to always want to be working with you and for you. I also want to acknowledge the fact that you are a problem solver and I thank you for that. Also, the work that you've done to increase African-American opportunities, not just at the airport, but in your role as the Director of Procurement. Thank you so much for all that you did. I don't know what you're going to do next, but whatever it is, I know you'll be successful at it. But stay close to that little girl and to your husband as you move forward and take the time that you need to rejuvenate. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, one more opportunity before Alderman O'Shea closes. All right, the last word. The chair recognizes Chairman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. Honored to stand in support of this. Jamie, you are a woman. I am proud to call you my friend. You've had a distinguished career in public service, spanned over three decades for mayoral administrations. And you've done that with unequaled intellect and integrity. But I think we need to go back. A little girl from humble beginnings in a little town, almost on the Iowa border, Jenna Seo, home to about 5,000 people. She put herself through college, Michigan State University. She put herself through law school to Paul University. She did this on her own. Now, when I became chairman of aviation almost seven years ago, my first official act was to get Jamie Ree confirmed as commissioner. And I can say, no other single vote that we've taken has had greater impact on our two international airports. Since then, I benefited from her immense knowledge and patience as she taught me about these important economic engines. Now, the incredible thing about Jamie, and some of you have kind of touched on this this morning, is that if you ask her a question or you ask her about a program, she didn't need to say, "I'll get back to you." She could have rattled off the answer right there. And sometimes, sometimes you got that answer in less than 15 minutes. She's verbose. Jamie, your service has touched so many lives. You've empowered small and diverse businesses and created economic opportunities in multiple roles. You dedicated yourself to that. Oftentimes, in this building, people talk about lifting groups up and creating opportunities. Jamie did it. Jamie did it better than anyone before her. Those opportunities may not have happened, as some of my colleagues mentioned stories, but if not for you, taking it personally. You set the highest standards for transparency and accountability in government. You transformed our two international airports, ensuring our two engines remain strong and viable for the future. And for that, all of us owe you a great debt of gratitude. Again, already mentioned, today, as we celebrate Women's History Month, some pretty powerful women have worked here in this city. You would have to be right there amongst them. And as a father of two daughters, I greatly appreciate your role as a dynamic, commanding leader who never, ever took BS from anyone. You've been a force to be reckoned with and it's been a great honor and pleasure to work with you over these many years. You better protect her. And that's something we all vow moving forward. Thankfully, you've assembled a great team, many of whom are here with us this morning. You must continue on. You are the most dedicated staff, impressive public servants. But why wouldn't that be the case? Because that's a testament to Jamie Ree, who put those people in those positions. Now, Jamie, while your impact in city government is extremely impressive, it is your kindness and compassion that you've shown to so many children in need. And that will stand out most in my mind. Very few people can honestly say they've changed the lives of so many in a way that you have. I'm so glad that Jazzy and Mike are here today. You've heard this for the past hour. I hope that all three of you can enjoy the next phase together. If nothing else, you get a chance to spend a little more time with one another. Jamie, thank you. And God bless you.
Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passes in the honor of-
In honor of Commissioner Jamie Ree and to her husband, Mike, and to Gisele, we congratulate you as a champion, modernizing our efforts to make sure that our airports are world-class. The completion, the expand, I'm sorry, the expansion, the completion of Terminal 5 and the modernization at Midway Airport. You fought for workforce development. You've made sure that innovation and dedication work hand in hand. For 30 years of dedicated service, Jamie Ree, the city of Chicago is forever grateful. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Congratulations again.
I have been, been good. I have been here since about 10.
Our next resolution is honoring Women's History Month. The chair recognizes Old Woman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am so proud to rise in support of this resolution honoring Women's History Month. As the Chair of the Women's Caucus in my first council meeting where we're honoring Women's History Month as the caucus leader, I want to thank my colleagues for enabling me to do that and entrusting me with that, with that honor. I am remiss in not having my remarks right here in front of me. No, I'm good, good. As the first Asian-American woman to sit on the city council, I want to acknowledge those who came before me and made history in Asian-American history. Names like Yuri Kociama, Patsy Mink, Yuri Kociama, who fought for racial justice, Patsy Mink, who was the first Asian-American woman of color to serve in Congress. She fought tirelessly for equal educational opportunities. And Grace Lee Boggs, who devoted her life to the empowerment of Detroit. I also want to thank three Graces from Chicago, from the Chicago Asian-American Pacific Islander community. Grace Ho, who's the deputy governor, holding the highest office of any Asian-American in state government. Grace Chan McKibben, who leads the Coalition for a Better Chinese-American Community in Chinatown. And Grace Pi, for her tireless work with Asian-Americans advancing justice. I thank them and acknowledge them for all of their work and advocacy on behalf of our community. And earlier this year, we tragically lost a woman who devoted her life to the empowerment of Chicago and in particular, our Asian-American community. And her name was Tuette Lee. For those of you who knew her, you were blessed to have known her. Her life was taken far too soon and I commit to ensuring that we're going to carry on her legacy in all that we do and we'll do our best to honor her and may she rest in peace. Now, in Chicago, we've got a long history of women leading the way by way of Jane Adams, Ida B. Wells, Bessie Coleman, Gwendolyn Brooks, Jane Byrne, and Lori Lightfoot. I'm glad to have with us today Sarah Garza Resnick. She's here in the box. Wait, Sarah? Sarah, Sarah is the president and CEO of Personal PAC and an 11th ward resident. I thank you for your tireless work for the more than 30 years that Personal PAC has fought to protect and strengthen reproductive rights for women in Illinois. And given the attacks on abortion from this White House, Sarah's work is critical. And I hope everyone takes this opportunity to speak with her today about how we can lock arms to protect access to reproductive care in our state. And let us use this moment as a call to action to stand together and do everything that we can to fight back. I thank each and every single one of the women that are here that I know we're going to hear about as the other alderpeople will be acknowledging you. I want to thank you for all that you do every day in support of women, on behalf of women, and to set an example for all of the little girls that are going to come behind us. Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before our next speaker, the chair would like to acknowledge Judge Mathis, I'm sorry, the former Alderman of 21st Ward. Thank you for being here, sir. Howard Brookers. Give it up for Howard Brookers, you all. Chair recognizes Old Woman Tabatas.
Today we gather to recognize some of our city's extraordinary women and uplift their accomplishments as examples to us all. I rise not only to honor a hero, but to celebrate an extraordinary individual whose courage, resilience, and unwavering commitment to her brothers and sisters embody the very best of what it means to serve. I am privileged to stand before you to recognize Chicago Police Officer Fernanda Bayasteros, a woman whose strength has inspired us all and whose actions remind us of the profound bonds that unite this department and should unite our city. On Wednesday, June 1, 2022, Officer Bayasteros faced a moment that no one should ever have to endure. While conducting a routine traffic stop in West Inglewood, she was shot in the head, a violent act that could have ended her story. But Officer Basayero is not defined by that moment of darkness. She is defined by what came after, an incredible display of courage, grace, and determination. Thanks to the quick thinking and heroism of her partner, Officer Young, whom she rightly called her guardian angel, she was rushed to the University of Chicago Medical Center. Five days later, she walked out of that hospital. She was greeted by the cheers of her fellow officers, a community that refused to let her stand alone, and being a strong Latina, a mariachi band. But Officer Basayero's story of strength doesn't end with her recovery. Even as she faced her own pain, physical, emotional, and mental, she turned her gaze outward. From her hospital bed, she recorded a message that spoke not just for gratitude, but of her solidarity with another police officer from her district who had been shot just days later. She said, quote, "To my fellow brother in blue who was recently injured in the light of duty, don't ever feel alone because you have a whole line of support from the blue family that wishes you a speedy recovery," end quote. In those words, we hear the heart of a leader, a woman who even in her own struggle chose to lift up others. Officer Basayero's commitment to her fellow police officers is a testament to the brotherhood and sisterhood that defined this department and should define our city. She spoke of the dangers police officers face every day, how a routine shift can turn catastrophic in an instant, and yet she chose to see the light in darkness. She said, quote, "I will grow stronger, both physically and mentally from this tragedy," end quote. And she has. Her presence here today, her continued dedication to her duty and her peers proves that her spirit is unbreakable. We also recognize that Officer Bayastero's strength is bolstered by the support around her, the police officers who saluted her as she left the hospital, the detectives who worked tirelessly to bring her shooter to justice, and the family and friends who stood by her side. Among those who greeted her that day was Chicago Police Officer Carlos Yanez Jr., himself a survivor of a shooting that claimed the life of his partner, Officer Ella French. Their embrace was more than a moment. It was a symbol of shared resilience, a reminder that no police officer walks this path alone. I also like to recognize Carlos Yanez Jr., who is here today to continue supporting Officer Bayastero. Officer Bayasteros continues to serve our city as a Chicago police officer, but she has taken her experience and decided to turn it into something positive. She has partnered with Chicago Police Lieutenant Rhonda Anderson, Carlos Yanez Jr., and Ella French's mother, Elizabeth French, to spearhead a nonprofit called Light the Line. This organization works to provide vital mental health resources to police officers coping with the demands of the job. This organization works to provide vital mental health resources to police officers coping with the demands of the job. Officer Bayasteros focuses her work on providing support services to police officers who have suffered catastrophic injuries. Today, we honor Officer Bayasteros not just for surviving, but for thriving. For turning a personal trial into a powerful example of courage and compassion. Her resolve strengthens us all and her commitment to supporting her fellow officers ensures that the blue family she spoke of remains a source of solace and solidarity for every member of this department. Officer Bayasteros, on behalf of the City of Chicago and every resident you swore to protect, I say thank you. Thank you for facing your darkest moment and not only choosing to see the light, but for shining the light brighter for others. You are a true hero. May your example inspire us all to rise above adversity and to stand together as you have in the face of any challenge. Please join me in giving Chicago Police Officer Fernanda Bayasteros the recognition she so richly deserves.
Thank you, Alderman Tabarez. The Chair recognizes Alderman Fuentes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank all of the women, older folks that sit in this chamber today. The largest number of women elected to Chicago City Council. That is because individuals around this city believe that women can lead in all sectors, including government. You know, here in the United States, thirteen point eight million of our businesses are owned by women. Women-owned businesses have generated three point nine trillion dollars in revenue. And women of color are, have the fastest growing rate of women-owned businesses in this country. Today, I have the privilege of honoring, acknowledging Melissa Quintana, who is the first woman to lead and start the Belmont Craig and El Moza Chamber of Commerce. Melissa, can you please stand? Melissa's sole vision and purpose is to ensure that we address the equity gap in business. That women have the same opportunities as our male counterparts. That we can take vacant storefronts up and down at Moza and Belmont Craig and and fill them with the most talented women that we have in the City of Chicago. You know, a couple of years ago, WBZ posted an interview they had with Melissa. And Melissa talked about how she didn't know who her Alderman was. In fact, she didn't know how to find them. And this relationship and her leadership is very telling of what women can do. When I was running for office, Melissa took it upon herself to post multiple videos of every time I knocked at her door. Because she wanted folks to understand, one, who was running for office, what they were running for, and more importantly, to ensure that there were informed voters in the 26th Ward. And then after that, she took it upon herself to build relationships with every single business owner in El Moza and Belmont Craig across multiple wards. To show that business owners also are an important stakeholder in our communities. And that they should have a chamber that represents them and represents them well. And I'm extremely excited for what Melissa is going to do, not just in the 26th Ward, but across the Northwest Side for Latino communities. And so I want to thank Melissa. I want to thank every woman in the box for showing that we could break barriers and shatter glass ceilings. That the future generations of women can see themselves in elected office as CEOs, as Presidents of Chamber of Commerce, as police officers, and as organizers. That when people question if we can lead, that we show them that we can. When people wonder if our emotions are going to take over and if we could just make solid decisions, we show that in fact, when women do the job, we do it better. I am excited for the growing leadership, not just in the City of Chicago, but across this nation. You know, we will elect a woman president and we will do that soon. And there are women all over this world that are watching us because we are their models. And so I'm grateful for the women that lead in the box. I'm grateful for the women that lead in this council. I think the Women's Caucus is the most peaceful caucus I belong to because women know how to get the job done. And so I'm excited to celebrate the month of March. We just celebrate International Women's Day. But let's not forget to celebrate women every single day. Whether you're a husband at home or a father to a daughter or a partner to a strong woman. Remember to be grateful for their leadership, their contributions, and remind them every single day that they don't come second. In fact, they come first all the time. Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Cruz.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, before I begin my recognition, I would like to take a moment to honor those who are no longer with us but whose influence continued to guide us and inspire us every day. Personally, I want to honor my mother, who is no longer here with me. And the person I am today is because of her. Her incredible work ethic, her resilience, and her unwavering love for family. And she has taught me the importance of perseverance and of never giving up and always pushing forward. Those lessons continue to shape my actions and my decisions. I love you, Mom. Now, it's my privilege to honor and recognize another inspiring woman who truly embodies the spirit of service, kindness, and dedication to our community. Lorraine Gray Antio. For over thirty years, Lorraine has called Independence Park Neighborhood Home, alongside with her husband, Dave, to whom she has been married for nearly forty-nine years. Wow. Together, they raised their two sons in that neighborhood. Lorraine has made an incredible impact, not just in her neighborhood, but across the entire city. Professionally, Lorraine has spent forty years as a licensed clinical social worker, helping those who need it the most. From teen mothers, unhoused neighbors, dialysis patients, and anyone in need for support and care. Even now, she remains licensed, a testament to her long-life, lifelong commitment to others. But Lorraine's contributions extend far beyond her career. She is a pillar of our community, always showing up to lend a hand. Whether it is volunteering in the first market, cleaning up neighborhood, or writing in the nature in the neighborhood column for the Greater Independence Park Neighborhood Association, known as GIBNAM, Lorraine does it all. It's no surprise she was recently named GIBNAM Volunteer of the Year. She is also passionate and a passionate advocate for our environment. Through open lands, Lorraine has helped plant more than five hundred trees in Chicago. Over a hundred fifty of them have been in the 30th Ward. She knows that trees aren't just beautiful. They are essential to the health and well-being of our communities. And she has worked tirelessly to ensure everyone has access to green spaces. Lorraine's generosity does not stop there. At the Everon Park Community Food Paint Tree, she volunteers as a shopper, making sure families have everything they need for a full and healthy meal. And if, if all that weren't enough, Lorraine sings in the Everon Park Lutheran Church Choir and serves on Representatives' Lump Point Environmental Advisory Council. Her friends and neighbors describe her as kind, thoughtful, compassionate, and committed. They call, they call her as a selfless, dedicated environmentalist and a true leader who is always looking for ways to help. So today, we recognize and thank Lorraine for her years of service, for her passion, and for her unwavering commitment to making our city a better place. Lorraine, Chicago is a greener, stronger, and more caring community because of you. But I also would like to share one more powerful thought that her friends often express. They say that Lorraine honors the dignity of all people. It is a reminder to all of us about the importance of honoring each person's worth. Thank you for everything you have done in our city, Lorraine, in making us all thrive to be better neighbors and, and better people. So please join me in celebrating Lorraine. And Lorraine, I want you to stand up so everybody can meet Lorraine. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies. I rise in support of this resolution. As a woman, we have a profound and multifaceted impact on society, contributing to economic growth, social progress, and our overall well-being. While also facing distinctive challenges, we wear multiple hats. Being professionals, mothers, caregivers, family supporters, you name it, we do it all with excellence. I would like to honor in that box Apostle Rashana Fitzpatrick. She's the executive pastor of the historic Stone Temple. And just to give you a few highlights about Pastor Fitzpatrick, she's working with a group of volunteers to beautify one vacant lot at a time. She works tirelessly, tirelessly feeding our community every Monday, twelve o'clock. You can catch her out there. She closes them. She gives a listening ear. It's a door that's always open with no kind of, you can meet her, she's the same way every day, all day. I don't know how you do it. In December 2020, Pastor Rashana and her husband Bishop Derek Fitzpatrick was acknowledged in The Time Magazine as 2020 Heroes for their intensified support to North Lyndale community. And also in 2021, Fortune, Rashana was listed number nine on Fortune's 100, Fortune's 50 Greatest Leaders, and 2021 Peace Fellow. At this time, I would like for you to stand, Pastor Fitzpatrick, so that we can continue to honor you and the rest of the ladies in that box. I want to express my pure gratitude to all of you and to all of the ladies, not just the one lady that I am representing. Your unwavering courage, dedication, and the fight for your families and for your community have been relentless, and I thank you all.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you. I too rise in honor of Women's History Month. A time to celebrate the achievements of women past and present and to recommit ourselves to the work that still lies ahead. I'm deeply grateful to the courageous women who have paved the way for us and I take immense pride in serving alongside so many strong female leaders in this chamber. It is a privilege to recognize remarkable women in our communities and this year, I am honored to acknowledge the 50th Ward's own Karen Bider. Karen is a devoted advocate who has dedicated her career to supporting families in crisis. As a programming director and volunteer coordinator at High Lifeline Midwest and previously through her work at Shalva, Karen has touched countless lives, offering strength, comfort, and hope to those in need. Unfortunately, due to a family emergency, Karen could not be with us today, but that does not diminish the impact of her incredible work. High Lifeline provides crucial support to children and families facing medical crisis, ensuring they never have to navigate their challenges alone. They help children going through cancer and other life-threatening diseases, fighting illness with love and providing case management, special trips, and an unforgettable medically-supervised summer camp experience so every child and family can feel supported and valued. They have touched and improved the lives of countless women and children in the Chicagoland area and across the nation. Shalva is the oldest Jewish domestic violence agency in the United States. It empowers survivors of abuse with counseling, education, and advocacy. They train rabbis, police officers, medical professionals, teachers, mental health professionals, and community groups to safely and sensitively respond to the needs of survivors of domestic abuse and provide services to victims in a culturally sensitive way. They make sure every woman has a place where they can go, where they will be believed and protected. Both of these organizations are lifelines, particularly for women who offer, who often shoulder the greatest burdens in times of hardship and I am deeply grateful for their contributions to my community and to the City of Chicago. And I thank you, Karen, for being a part of it. This year, Women's History Month falls out in an opportune time for the Jewish community as we prepare to celebrate the Holiday of Purim, a holiday described in the biblical book of Esther. The story of Esther is one of strength, defiance, and faith. She risked everything to save her people, proving that one woman's voice can change the course of history. Esther is a shining example of what it means to stand up for what is right, even in the face of danger. She is an inspiration to women everywhere who continue to fight for justice and equality. As we honor Women's History Month, let us recognize the Esters of today. Women like those here who uplift the vulnerable, fight for the voiceless, and dedicate their lives to making our communities a better place. May we follow their example and work together to build a world where all women are empowered, protected, and valued. And just as an aside, with the Holiday of Purim, I have our traditional cookies here. So if anybody needs a snack, please stop by. They're home in Tashin. Please come by and have a few. Thank you all so much. All of you. Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank all of our guests for all the difference that you make in your communities. Your leadership matters so much. I also want to thank my colleagues here in City Council, everybody that has pushed for legislation that makes us safer. Particularly, everybody that helped with the passage of the bodily autonomy sanctuary ordinance that we are now seeing in real time how important it was to create these protections. I feel incredibly fortunate that we live in Chicago and that we live in Illinois and that we get to be a sanctuary for women and trans people all across this nation. But we know that it is not the same reality for so many people in this country. I wanted to talk a little bit about the historical significance of International Working Women's Day. And this is the reason why we have this month where we honor our history. The journey to dedicate a day to honor working women has been long and it has been rooted in the fight for women's right to vote, for better pay and working conditions, for autonomy against sexism and women's oppression, and against imperialist wars. And this is internationally. We remember the 1910 Chicago garment worker strikes, initiated and led by a seventeen-year-old woman demonstrating the ability of workers in the garment industry to unite across ethnic lines in response to low wages and poor working conditions. At its height, the strike saw up to forty-one thousand workers walk out. We remember how the Triangle Factory fire in New York took the lives of more than one hundred and forty working women, most of them Italian and Jewish immigrants, and the solidarity and relentless fight for labor protections that this tragedy sparked. We remember the Bread and Roses strike and the popularization of the beautiful idea that we deserve both the bread and the roses, the wages and the dignified conditions. We remember all the Black, Indigenous, and trans women and femmes, both in the U.S. and the Global South, who have charted the way for us to fight like hell while preserving our humanity and in solidarity with the struggles of all oppressed people and our earth, because we know they are all interconnected. We remember that historically, International Working Women's Day has been a day of struggle, a day to fight against war, to fight violence against women, to fight for inclusion, and to show solidarity. And it feels particularly important in this moment as we see protections for all of us being thrown out the window by the current presidential administration to remind us that none of these wins are guaranteed to remain, that more than ever, we have to fight to preserve our rights and to expand them to ensure that there's dignified futures for us and the generations to come. In the face of an authoritarian government run by oligarchs, we must recommit to fighting relentlessly for all of us to have the bread and the roses that all of us and the coming generations deserve. And I want to talk to the men, to the cis heterosexual men in particularly here listening or from wherever you are listening. You have a responsibility to create a culture in this society that promotes safety for women. Women do not feel safe. And it is very important that you think about that every day and in every space because God knows we need you to join us in solidarity, to protect us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Guitares.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, as we celebrate Women's History Month, I first of all would like to thank our 14 Ward for allowing me to represent them as the first women in City Council for that Ward. But also would like to take a moment to recognize the incredible women in our communities who dedicate themselves to making a difference every single day. And would also like to thank my staff, Alejandra, Cindy, Rosie, and Brianna, that work alongside me to better our communities. I'm proud today to recognize Rosario Ayala, a remarkable leader representing the women in the Archer Heights community. For over 10 years, Rosario has been a dedicated member of the Archer Heights Civic Association, volunteering her time to ensure residents stay informed about the issues affecting our community and our Ward. Alongside her, other incredible women from the Archer Heights Civic Association Board, Cassandra, Antonia, and Mary Ann also dedicate their free time to uplifting our community. They are a reminder that leadership is about showing up, listening, and taking action. They embody the spirit of Women's History Month, and I'm grateful for their commitment to our community. To Rosario and to all the women who have lived and strengthened our neighborhoods, thank you. Your work does not go unnoticed, and today, we celebrate you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you. I too rise in support of this resolution. I want to thank all the women in the box, as well as my colleagues on the City Council, for all the hard work you do. It doesn't go unnoticed, and I truly, really do appreciate it. As a male, I support strong women, and I appreciate being side by side with you guys, whether it's one of my colleagues or a community resident to try to uplift, to do what I can in your endeavors. I want to acknowledge somebody, my guest that I brought today, Cheryl Johnson from the All Gale Gardens community. Cheryl John? Cheryl, well, number one, let's celebrate. We're celebrating her birthday. So I think we could acknowledge that Cheryl's birthday. I won't say how old you are, but I will say it's your birthday. She is the Executive Director of People for Community Recovery. But I think more importantly, as many of you know, she is the daughter of Hazel Johnson, the mother of environmental justice. Let's give a roundup for Ms. Hazel Johnson. Cheryl, I know it's important to you to carry your mother's legacy and the work she's done for all these years. And I know the leadership your mother provided all these years can never be duplicated. But I could say, watching you in action, that you are your own trailblazer, and you have become your own woman. From the things you have done on the ground, you know, sometimes when people are directors or CEOs, they delegate the work. But I could say, I see you on the ground doing the work, still after all these years. And as Alderman of the 10th Ward, I appreciate the work you do. You make my job easier, and you provide a better quality of life for not only the residents in All Gale Gardens or the 10th Ward or the 9th Ward, but across this country, because you've taken the fight all the way to the federal level. And that is something that I appreciate so very much, watching you do this work, engage in the good fight, and doing it because of what you believe in. I also want to acknowledge the work you are currently doing and trying to bring this training center to our community. That's so very important in educating not only, once again, the people of All Gale Gardens or the 10th Ward, but across this city and state. People need to become educated, and I think this is the first step in doing that. You're bringing positive light to the toxic donut that your mom poised so many years ago. So Cheryl, thank you. Happy birthday, and I cannot wait to see the work you will continue to do as Director of People for Community Recovery. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Remidda.
Awesome. Thank you. Cheryl, I think you're going to have to continue standing because I'm also speaking about you. You don't have to stand, but I'm just letting you know in advance. But I'm grateful to know the strength and the beauty of women because I've been raised by them. So hi, Mom. Hi, Grandma. They're watching. I also get to work with them, and I also get to sit with one. I call them my workmamas. I also really love working with women that I can have Cheesemate time, gossip time. But it's also really great to be able to celebrate one another. We notice the little things, right? We notice when somebody's hair changes or if somebody got their nails done. And those things really make a difference in the workplace, that you feel acknowledged, that you feel seen. And on my way to work today, I thought about women's history, and I kept thinking about sort of the struggle and the fight and all the many hats that we all carry. And that could be burdensome. That could be really heavy on our backs. But I don't want to forget the beauty and the grace and the style that we also bring to the work and that lightness. So today, I want to talk about Cheryl because you've done that. You've endured hard losses, losses within your family that I unfortunately relate to. But you have not taken those losses to bed. You've fostered them, and you've built community around those losses. And so during a time, during an administration that has questioned our vulnerable communities, the environmental impacts that we feel here in the city of Chicago, I want to applaud you for fighting back. I want to applaud everybody that's here today for fighting back. And we will continue doing so. And I just want to let everyone know that we're working on an ordinance that will further the work that Cheryl has done, not only in a specific pocket, but something that will endure great impacts in all of the city of Chicago. And so if we really support women, if we really care about the cause, then I hope that we can stand with Cheryl, not only today, but later when the ordinance is come upon us. So thank you so much, Cheryl, and thank you for all the women in the box.
The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Mitz.
Thank you. I too stand to support Women's History Month, and the young lady that I have represented 37 Ward today is none other than Elise Edwards. And before I read her history, I would like for the council to have a few moments of silence. Elise just lost her mother a couple of weeks ago. So we do want to acknowledge the fact, as we're celebrating women's, that that's a big part of your life, and thank you. Okay, Elise is a faith-based community organizer and that has given herself to the Black and Brown community in both her personal time and a professional career. And just last month, Elise organized, helped to organize out of the 77 communities in the city of Chicago. She brought all communities together, faith-based, to join in so that we can stand united, no matter what color you were, what race you were, how old you were, how young you were, whether you was dressed or not dressed. Everybody were united, and I never saw anything like that before. It was held at, in fact, it was held at First Baptist Congregation of Church. And it's something that they intend to continue on because they saw the power, so the power in faith. Also, Elise has served four years as Chair of the Black Affair of Unity, United Airline Business Resource Group, where she was the overseer of a subcommittee focused on making the Black experience the best experience in corporate America. She has served seven years as the block club president over on the 10, 1100 block on Hardy. Yeah, I know, which was something that you wouldn't have seen. And that's how I met Elise. And that block has been transformed, I can tell you, from the effort that she had put in and led the community. And it's just not a Black community. We have just as many expensies on the block as Blacks or more. But you got in there and you created a safe space where you stood up and stood strong to say, "Not here, not in our door." And I had to hear it every day until we got there. But my staff had to hear it every day. But we thank you for it because it's women's like you that makes us better, that make every other woman around better. Not only have she's continued to lead the Black and Brown community with innovative tactics on being a positive impact to the community by elevating the community voice to the decision-makers of the city. And yes, Elise, you would challenge us all, including the mayor. You sits on his board. I guess you have that tenacity to be one, want to be heard. And if I'm wrong, you want him to share with you why you're wrong and how you're wrong, because if not, you're going to keep moving. She is part of the core leadership team for the 1865 Fest Coalition for the past five years, bringing awareness to Juneteenth and creating space for our communities to celebrate our successes, which you believe in celebrating when great work is being done. Elise currently serves as one of the co-chairs for the Mayor's African-American Engagement Council, where they are focused on investing in our community and the future of our youth. Elise is the founder and Executive Director of Drawout Ministry. It's a nonprofit transitional home for women's coming out of prisons, where the vision is to help this population get acclimated upon reentry and unlimited support in being a productive part of society. She is a member of the West Side Stakeholders Subcommittee under Reverend Walter Jones, leading the community into public safety. She's a part of the Gap Builders, working with young peoples. And most recently, were elected to the 11th District Community Public Safety Council Coordinator. So Elise Edwards has caught my attention in many ways as we honor women's, not only from Austin area as we did last year, but in the West Humboldt Power community as we're doing this year. So thank you, Elise, for your support. Thank you for your leadership. I know you wasn't looking forward to this, and I know you didn't even know that I had nominated you. But I felt that it was worthy, and you was well-deserving of it. On behalf of the 37th Ward, we honor you today for the outstanding service that you're providing in our community, and you ask nothing in return for it because you have the faith and you're doing what you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Taylor.
To the women of the City Council, I call you all Alder Sisters. And while I might not always agree with you politically, I do respect and love your passion for our communities. To all the women in City Hall, to the Clerk's Office, to Ms. Mabel and the folks in the back, to the women who sit on the different floors to make sure that you're able to see your Alderman, thank you. It's so easy to not recognize people for what they do every day, but I appreciate and love seeing every one of you. If it's a bottle of water, if it's a hug, if it's a cookie, y'all know I like to eat, whatever it is. To the women who hold us accountable, to the Ms. Jessicas and the Ms. Zoies of the world, and to Miracle, to the people who come, to Ms. Jasmine, to they come and cuss us out, but they telling the truth. They speaking truth to power. And so I appreciate those women being able to just stand up and come and speak their piece because we know as women, we're always the target, and people are always quick to dismiss how we feel. Ms. Cheryl, before I get to my person, I love you, sister. You are your mother's daughter. She would extremely be proud of you. And while you are the mother of environmental justice, people, let's not forget this, the same woman that slumped the streets when they was closing them schools. And so let's not forget that this was one of the women who marched from her community to downtown to say, "Don't close schools." And so I always remember that about you. I remember you cussing the mayor out, several mayors out, and I always respect and love. I'm like, if she cuss them out, so can I. And so I love you, sister, and I want to give you your flowers while you're here. Janora Stone. Janora Stone from the 20th Ward is a woman that I did not get along with at first. We were like, we were into it about the Obama Presidential Center. And it wasn't, sometimes, and the gentleman spoke about it earlier, sometimes you talking loud and ain't saying nothing, but we don't talk to listen and understand each other. And so when we finally had a conversation, it was not about community members not wanting the Obama Center. It's about us wanting to benefit from it. And after that conversation, we clearly understood each other, and we started to work together. Janora Stone is a professional massage therapist and the owner of Spa on the Go Massages. She is a 13-year resident from Woodline who loves and has become the change she seeks. She's focused on working with seniors' youth and is committed to giving back to our communities. Janora is the President of Mamie Till Mobily Park Advisory Council, Southeast Quadrant Leader for Network of Woodline, a court advocate for the 3rd District, and the 3rd District Caps member. She is also a board member for various groups like the 20th Ward Development Team, Jackson Park Conservatory, Black Wall Street, a Chicago Dream Team Cycle crew. She a Black girl that cycle, y'all. She also works as a community partner with the Obama Presidential Center. Janora is a committed volunteer for the city of Chicago. She proudly volunteers with Patriotic Cancer, Kidney Foundation, Marches of Dimes, Leukemia Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, Bank of America Shamrock, Marathon Lifetime Spring and Fall Races, Cinco de Mayo, the Mag Mile, Turkey Trot, Santa Hustle, Jingle Bell, and the NASCAR Race. She's loved teaching children how to garden while being in a community garden. She's loved teaching children how to garden while being in a community garden. Ms. Janora also have kid who her sons serve in the service. And so Ms. Janora, I wanted to take this time to say that I love you and thank you for our commitment to the community. I would be remiss if I didn't shout out the women that work in my office. So to Tyra, Ling, Chris, Vanessa, and Makaya, I love you so much. Thank you. These are young women who take care of they little old lady in my office. And so it's them long days and long nights where they're committed to their community. And I tell people all the time, these people don't work for older women, Tila. They work for the constituents of the 20th Ward. And so I love you all and I thank you.
The chair recognizes Alderman Hoppinworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand with the amazing women in the box and my esteemed colleagues, including the Chair of the Women's Caucus, our first Asian woman Chair, Nicole Lee. Thank you. I'm proud to represent the 48th Ward, Edgewater, whose constituent sent one of the first women to City Council in 1971, Alder Woman Mary Lou Headland. Representation matters. Ori Pennick in the box is one who constantly reminds me of this. Ori is a mother, a civil rights attorney, housing advocate, and longtime Chicago philanthropist. She's a mentor and dear friend to me and to the 48th Ward and to the city of Chicago. Ori's strength of character, her conviction of values, is deeply rooted in her parents' story of black migration from Alabama and Mississippi. Born in Chicago, Ori loved Chicago. She's a product of public schools, Inglewood High School and UIC Chicago Circle Campus. She became politically active to make Chicago even better, working to help elect Chicago's first-ever black Alder Woman, Anna Langford, of Chicago's 16th Ward in 1971. Representation matters. Ori helped establish Mayor Harold Washington's Advisory Commission on Women's Affairs and served on the Chicago Police Board under Mayor Washington. Ori, you are a tireless advocate for fair housing and for women. You directed the city's first battered women's shelter. You served as the President of the Leadership Council for Metropolitan Open Communities. The Leadership Council for Metropolitan Open Communities was a direct outcome of the Chicago Freedom Movement with Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and others, including and especially many unnamed women. Representation matters. From 1992 to 2002, Ori Pennick was the President and CEO of the Leadership Council for Metropolitan Open Communities. Ori has always been a community leader. She's never been afraid to speak truth to power. And when anyone, including me, speaks on affordable housing, she always asks, affordable to whom? Ori, will you please stand? Ori, thank you for representing and loving Chicago. I love you. We love you right back, and we honor you today. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to also rise in support of this important Women's History Month resolution. I want to take the moment to thank the 18 members of the council, the great women of this council that provided a critical service to the city of Chicago during difficult times. Also, we'd like to especially give a thanks to those who make possible our work for Chief of Staff Lucia Moy on the 25th Ward, as well as my wife, Lorene Targos, who is not only a mother of triplets, but she's also fighting courageously with her union, AFGE, to help federal workers while fighting to keep the Environmental Agency and to protect the well-being of many Chicagoans and people across the country. And also special thanks to Nicole Cantello, the President of the Union. And my shout out to all the federal workers, especially those women who are out there in the trenches, supporting and protecting our communities during difficult times. I want to take the moment for Emily Pike also. Emily was a 14-year-old native girl from San Carlos Apache Tribe who went missing from a group home in Arizona, January 27th of this year. Her body found on February 14th. Her killer has still not been arrested, and institutions who did not take her case seriously have not been held accountable for dismissing her case as a runaway. I want to challenge the silence of our institutions as black and brown women are disproportionately missing from Chicago and across our country. It's not all men, but it's so frequently men. And I challenge the men here to make safer world for these women, as Alder Woman Rodriguez Sanchez mentioned. We must do all the work necessary to end violence against women and girls. I challenge all the men hearing my voice today to initiate a conversation this week and the next one, and to talk to another colleagues and other people in their life about the end of violence in our communities and among men specifically, to honor women by ending violence. We owe the great debt to these women, and I mentioned, and literally the millions more. Let's set up and take responsibility to that debt and to work together to make the change that we all know is necessary. I'd like now to take a few moments also to recognize those who are not in the box and then those beautiful women who are there in the box, those courageous women in the box. I would like to take a special recognition to my good friend and mentor, Elvira Ariano, immigrant women who in 2006 fought courageously against family separations, who fought courageously to stay and protect her young child. Today, Saul Ariano is a member of our Police Accountability Commission and an example how immigrant families contribute to our cities and our country. We are no criminals, yet we continue to be criminalized. And my recognition to those women out there, just like black and brown women who protect family separations and to protect the children for a better future. My recognition to Elvira Ariano as our trailblazer and a fighter for our families, documented or not. I also like to take a moment to recognize a great friend who is in the box and the many courageous women in the box. My thank you for your service to the city of Chicago and important contributions and leadership in these difficult times. I want to recognize a special friend of mine, Cheryl Johnson. And I want to also recognize the beautiful contributions, powerful contributions of her family, Hazel Johnson in particular, that I do not want to be dismissed. She was indeed the mother of environmental justice, a woman who was unapologetic about protecting her community and putting people over profit consistently, unapologetically, in a time where there was so much fear mongering, almost infighting to demonize and criminalize especially black women. That is critical and courageous in a time like this to take a stance. I tell you that Hazel Johnson and her legacy has protected communities like ours, impelsing a little village where we continue to see environmental injustices. It is their powerful contribution in our country, in our city, that makes our city continue to fight the good fight. She was not only the environmental justice mother for many of us, but a champion of justice that continues to inspire people even today. Cheryl Johnson carries the legacy of an organization that has been existence before even I came to this world, the People for Community Recovery. That is such a powerful legacy to remember. That is a powerful legacy that had talked about federal action. Indeed, Hazel Johnson was invited even by the President of the United States in 1994 to talk about federal actions to protect environment and to protect especially black and brown communities. In 2021, Cheryl actually contributed tremendous amount to our communities to be a leader in the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act so that black and brown people have opportunities to job creation in Chicago. Those some opportunities today at a risk, and that's why I celebrate your legacy with action. I am grateful for Hazel Johnson and I'm grateful for Cheryl for continuing her legacy. And I'm extremely thankful for you leaving not only a legacy with words, but especially with action and courageous action in a time of fear. I am thankful for you for the introduction of the Hazel Johnson Ordinance to talk about community impact and what is at stake is the health and the well-being of communities like mine. I'm thankful, I'm thank you, and thank you forever for the great contributions of Hazel Johnson, Cheryl Johnson, to the city of Chicago. And for that, I stand in support of this resolution. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support in highlighting and celebrating all these beautiful women that are here today. I would like to highlight one woman in particular who is a leader, a mentor, a concerned resident, and a friend of mine, Naina Gronki-Kazinsky, who grew up in a one-and-a-half-bedroom apartment in Portage Park, which sounds probably very familiar to many of us. But she was actually one of eight children in a very working-class, blue-collar family. As you can imagine, Naina was expected, not expected, but she did. She moved out of her apartment, found her own place to live while working full-time as a waitress to save money to become all things, to go to school, to become a barber. And at that time, as you can imagine, that was unheard of. But Naina, being the trailblazer that she is, met that challenge head-on. While going to school to become a barber, they stuck her in the back of the school, right closest to the exit door. So it would be even easier when the time came, hopefully maybe in somebody's eyes, for you to leave, to quit, which she never did. She not only persevered, she not only passed all her boards, but she somehow, some way saved enough money while waitressing to buy her own, purchase her own barber shop in downtown Chicago, first woman to do so. And then you can imagine the challenges that would be when men would come into the barber shop and ask, when they would see Naina, is the barber in today? And Naina would have to reply, I am the barber. And some people would leave. They would turn around and leave. But Naina, again, being as persistent and gritty as she is, stayed the course. She not only succeeded in that barber shop, she opened other barber shops in the city of Chicago. And I could only imagine how hard it is to cater to men, haircuts, because I spend a lot of time with Alderman Napolitano and Alderman Beal, who constantly check their hair in the mirror and in the windows. And even if one piece of hair is out of place, they're in a bad mood. But I commend you on being patient, on being kind, and being fierce. I think above all the business accolades that you have earned, and I think you're probably most proud of being a dedicated wife, a loving mother, and an even more loving grandmother. You see, Naina was not only a fighter in the business world, she was also a fighter for her husband, who was battling cancer before he passed. Naina stood by his side day and night and was the primary caregiver for Jerry. Naina is a perfect example of somebody who is not afraid to overcome obstacles and not afraid to help others overcome obstacles. Naina still continues, after, by the way, 44 years of being a successful barber in the city of Chicago, she still continues to help business owners in our community, in Portage Park, constantly going in and out of different businesses to educate people and let them know of different grants or opportunities that may be available to them, especially other women. I knew I liked Naina when I found out that she was a White Sox fan. There's not many of us on the North Side of Chicago, but we were drawn to one another. Yes, I see you as well, yes, for White Sox. But it's not easy being an elected official on the North Side of Chicago and having White Sox plates, I'll tell you that. But we do that. But I want to highlight you and I want to give you your roses for all the work that you have done throughout your life, for being a trailblazer for not only women, but everybody who are inspired. I, myself, as a man, I'm inspired by your story. I'm inspired by your generosity. I am inspired by your kindness and your unselfishness. And I think when people get to know who you are, it's easy to mistake you as just some kind woman who is offering some advice, but they don't understand the depths of you and the levels that you have fought and the obstacles that you have overcome. So if you would like to stand, I would like to recognize you, Naina, for all the work that you do. May God bless you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I do know that there are some of the women in the box do need to leave. And I do apologize for our final two speakers, but you are under just a little bit of pressure. So our final two speakers, Alderman Rodriguez and then Alder Woman Nugent has requested to speak last. Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Yes, well done, Mr. Chair. I hope to model to other men how to do this, and we'll do it, hopefully wisely, but certainly briefly. To Ori Pennick and Sarah Garza Resnick, two people who I've worked with throughout my career, leadership in the philanthropic world and in the social justice world. And to all the other women in the box, I say thank you for your great contributions. You said it well, to our staff, to all those who represent a real voice of power that happen to be women, I say today and every day of March, but every day of the year is your day. We need to honor your contributions. To my departed mother, who was a rape victim advocate, who ran a soup kitchen, who was a social worker, and also a member of a federal union that's under attack right now. God rest her soul. She's left with me, the brilliance of brevity, and thanks. Thank you for all your work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And before our last speaker, Alderman Nick Spazato, wanted to speak through Alder Woman Cruz, but apparently Alderman Gardner did such a fabulous job of speaking in favor of Naina, who is a trailblazer. But again, Alderman Spazato also thanks you for your leadership. With that, the chair recognizes Alder Woman Sam Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution today, and I'm grateful for all of the women in the box and the work that you all do. I do want to point out one particular person in the box, and that's Principal Elizabeth Liz Mordekkakis. She's an incredible human being and she provides outstanding leadership at Northside Learning Center. For those of you not familiar with Northside Learning Center, it's a high school, a CPS high school in the 39th Ward, and it's for students with significant intellectual disabilities and impaired adaptive functioning. Principal Mordekkakis and her team work so diligently every single day to provide the very best learning environment for these students while focusing on life skills and student independence. I encourage any of you to come out and experience this school and what they do. They have a band, they do music, we've helped put in a sensory garden. We had the mayor there, he rocked out. We played the theme song from Top Gun with the students. It's just really an exceptional experience and a place to be. And if I had a child that required that type of education, it would be in your school where I want them because you don't just educate those children, you love those children. And that's what every parent of a child wants is an educator who will love them. So on behalf of myself and the 39th Ward, we so appreciate what you do. You're just an incredible advocate for your students, for your staff, and also for your daughter because you're a new mom. So Liz, please stand so we can acknowledge you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So thank you to Elise Edwards, Apostle Fitzpatrick, and Ms. Pinnick, and Belestros, and General Cheryl Johnson, Ms. Stone, Bider, Liz, thank you, Lorraine, met her earlier, Melissa, of course Nyina, thank you for your leadership in one of the favorite parts of the city, up in Portage Park, and I know Ms. Resnick had to leave, Rosario, thank you all. You know, this body has spoken so eloquently about the value, the contribution of women in our society, from the civil rights to labor rights to reproductive rights, countless other causes, women have been on the forefront fighting for justice. Today, we have 18 Alderwomen, I believe, that represent and serve the diversity of our city. This celebration for women started in 1987 in Observation of Women's History Month, and this month and every month, we do take time to reflect on the importance of women's rights and gender equality as we celebrate and honor the resilience and leadership and the incredible impact that women have had on the past, the present, and the women that will impact our future. I do want to give a special shout-out to two women who are incredibly important to me, the first black first lady in the history of Chicago, my wife Stacy, and of course, my daughter Brayden. So on behalf of the city of Chicago, we love you and we thank you. And with that, Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage in the omnibus.
Very well, hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you all for being patient with us today as we clear the box. Fairwell, as the women that we have honored today leave the box, our final resolution, our final resolution is honoring the life of Ms. Chandra Libby. She was the Director of Homeless Outreach and Prevention Program within the Department If there are any Alders that wish to speak to this resolution, or Alders, thank you Thank you all very much. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to be associated with this important resolution today. It was really a shock and a surprise to hear of the passing of Chandra Libby. I didn't have a long-time knowledge of Chandra. We worked together in the last four years since the pandemic on homeless issues as they began to creep up in the 3rd Ward, which is the South Side of Chicago and the community of Bronzeville and the South Loop. Chandra had an incredibly difficult job, but she did that job with a strong sense of compassion and love for the people that she was intervening in their lives and trying to assist. You could call Chandra any time of the day on her cell phone. She didn't like to give out her cell phone too much, but she would give it out, and you could call her, and she was Johnny on the spot, always willing to be available, to be out on the street, under those viaducts, in those lots, talking to people, providing services, and I really, really appreciated her support. So I wanted to thank the family for sharing her with us. Her loss is an incredible loss to the city of Chicago. Not many people like to do that kind of work and shun it. Chandra just dived in and did it with a passion and with a love that you saw every day in her work. So to the family, on behalf of the residents of the 3rd Ward, we share our condolences and sympathy for her loss and her improvements and achievements in our ward and in our city will never be forgotten. Thank you so much, family. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Recognizes Alderman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, of course, also rise to heartily support this, this resolution. You know, this city has a lot of, lot of unsung heroes who fight every day to make this city great. And I've only been an Alderman for two years, and I had a lot of, I had a chance to spend a lot of time with Chandra, actually. I came home from, from military deployment in early, early 2022 to find a giant encampment outside my front door where people were overtly dealing and using drugs, and I thought, as I walked through my, with my three-year-old daughter through that, I said, geez, somebody ought to do something about that. And it was that germ of a thought that eventually led me here today. But, but let me tell you what she did. We went to, and this was, by the way, right in the middle of a lot of high-rise buildings where thousands of people lived, and we went to at least a dozen meetings where people would, her, me, and the 12th District Commander, sometimes on the border of the ward, Alderman Riley would join us as well, and people would just scream at us for 90 minutes. And she was, was so cool, calm, collected, and the way she was able to answer people's oftentimes irritable and unfair questions. And let me tell you even more impressive, every Thursday, she would go out and offer all of the 22 people under, under these viaducts, she would offer them immediate housing. I went with her several times in that. And this became a very dangerous encampment. Three people got shot out there, there were four armed robberies, but she was still doing this regularly. And by the way, 10 people actually took, took housing on this, and this dangerous situation is, is gone today largely as a result of, of her efforts. And through it all, the irritated residents, the addicts under these viaducts, even the kind of the criminal element there, she gave dignity to all the people involved in this, in this situation. And it was really a Herculean task with, with, with a tough situation. And I, and I learned a lot about how to handle the situations of people by watching how she did it. So it was really a, it was a pleasure to get to know her, and I wish I'd had more time to thank her for all she taught me. So thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you all for sharing her with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a truly honor to be referred to as Madam.
I apologize, I was getting a little emotional talking about Chandra, my apologies.
Listen, to be elevated to the status of a black woman is truly the honor of my life. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Sam Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution, and I had the distinct privilege of working with Chandra when we cleaned the property behind the Marine Corps building to create a home for new arrivals, and also had the distinct pleasure of working with Chandra when we found housing and cleaned out a viaduct up at Bryn Mawr on the Northwest Side. And she was so graceful, and she had so much empathy, and she had a can-do attitude, and she helped people connect with housing in a way that was dignified and let them have a sense of agency, and I thought that was just really beautiful to watch. So for the folks over at DFSS, I know this was a huge loss, so please accept my condolences. And to the family of Chandra who are with us today, I am, I'm so incredibly sorry for your loss. She was just a really great person to work with and such a class act, so my condolences. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this resolution. I also was shocked to hear of Chandra's passing. She was truly an amazing person. She was out in the 50th Ward many, many times, working with me, she was just a phone call away. She was an amazing person on the inside and out, and totally dedicated to her job and her career in making the city a better place. My condolences go out to all of you, you should be very, very proud of her. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder La Spada.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I'm very glad and humbled to rise in support of this resolution in tribute to Chandra. I won't repeat what others have said, but I will say that the trait that I admired most in her was her empathy, that for those that she came out to serve in our ward, she never viewed them as just a set of vices or collection of social ills, but as human beings with stories and hopes and potential, that even those who were living under our viaducts and in our parks have potential and have something to contribute. And I'm grateful for what she showed us and what she taught us, and the traits that she embodied, I hope, are ones that all of us work to cultivate in our own lives, and I hope in doing so, that we continue to be a living tribute to her. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand to be associated with this resolution. You know, when I got into office, Humboldt Park had about 40 tents, and the summer of 2023, that tent encampment had immediately grown to over 80, about 100 tents. And for a first-time Alder, that's, that's not easy work to confront when you have constituents who are raising the concerns, more importantly, when you have residents in a tent encampment who are in dire need of shelter and housing. Sandra helped me through every single community meeting, every email, every question, every moment of doubt. Sandra was there to ensure me that we were going to get through it. When I didn't have the confidence, she would lift me up to make sure that we were addressing the needs of our community, but more importantly, that we centered humanity, and we put shelter and housing first. I mean, Sandra understood the systemic barriers, she understood the interpersonal battles of our unhoused residents and how to serve them with dignity and respect. When I learned about Sandra's loss, I was devastated. I was devastated for a community like Humboldt Park who had a warrior, a champion, and someone on the front lines who was going to do everything possible to ensure that we sheltered and housed people with dignity and respect. And then I was devastated for the team over at the Department of Family and Support Services, because I knew how talented, skilled, and radically loved Sandra was by the team. And for the family members that are in the box today, I'm extremely sorry for your loss. But I want you to know that Sandra left a legacy. She was someone that inspired people, not just in the Department of Family Support Services, but elected officials, to do better, act better, but more importantly, to show our community that we can build systems of love and care, that they can exist, and the bureaucracy doesn't have to stand in our way to do what's right for residents in the city of Chicago, and that's to ensure that they have a roof over their head. Because of someone like Sandra, we housed over 80 individuals in Humboldt Park in December of 2024, and it's because she started that journey with us, and I'm extremely grateful for everything that she's done for me, that she's done for our community, but more importantly, the city of Chicago. Thank you all for being here today, and in honor of Sandra, I'm extremely proud to stand with her legacy. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, Chair recognizes Alder Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Chair. I stand in support of this resolution, and I also want to express my condolences and my gratitude for the incredible work that Chandra did for our communities, and that continues to live in the safety that so many people are experiencing because of her leadership, and that will continue to live in all the leadership that has been developed in the department, that is going to continue doing the work that she, that she did so beautifully. I worked with Chandra through two AMEs and several particular instances of individuals without housing, and the vast majority of those people are still housed, and they not only have a roof over their head, but they are permanently receiving support services that were desperately needed for them to be able to live healthy lives. I still visit some of these residents, and I am so proud of the work that Chandra did to improve the quality of life of all of these people and keep them safe. So I'm, I experienced a lot of pain when I realized that Chandra was not going to be with us anymore, but I can see the greatness of her work that is going to outlive her. And I also want to say that I know that my staff in particular has also felt the loss very deeply. My staff worked with Chandra very closely in order to, to be able to house so many people, and without her help, that would not have been possible. So in the name of my staff, in the name of my community, I want to thank Chandra forever for her work, and I, I want to express my solidarity with all of you in, in this loss. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Ramirez Rosa.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. 10 years ago in May, I became Alderperson of Chicago's 35th Ward, and when I took on that position, one of the top issues in my community was the homeless encampment underneath the Belmont and Kedzie underpass. And so I reached out to my ward superintendent at that time, Luis Sepega, and I said, what do we do? What do I do? And he said, reach out to Chandra Libby. And so I sent my first email to Chandra Libby requesting her support and ensuring that my unhoused neighbors receive the support and resources to get into housing, and she not only helped me then, but she helped me every single time that I emailed her or called her after that. And as if you have heard now, she's helped so many people across the city. And so when I think about Chandra's life, I think about Matthew 6:19. I think about the fact that our Lord instructed us not to store up our wealth here on this earth, where it will be decaying and eaten by moths, but to store our wealth up in heaven. I have no doubt that every single time Chandra helped someone get housed, she was storing up her wealth in heaven. I have no doubt that every single time Chandra helped someone in the throes of drug addiction find the help that they need, she was storing up her wealth in heaven. And so I know that when Chandra reached that place, that we will all hopefully be going to one day, she was greeted with a penthouse, she was greeted with a pool, she was greeted with all of the good things that she did during her time here on this earth, as she gets her eternal peace and her eternal rest. So to the family of Chandra, thank you for making her the person that she was, thank you for supporting her so that she could support so many Chicagoans in her professional life. To her friends and to her coworkers, thank you for all of the work that you did with her, and thank you for all of the work that you will continue to do in her name and continuing to expand and live her legacy. Long may Chandra live, long may she live in peace, long may she rest in peace, and thank you, Chandra, for everything that you did. And please, you know, save us some room in that penthouse that you have up in heaven. Thank you.
Thank you, Father Ramirez Rosa. Chair recognizes Alderman Byron Sixto Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to rise in support of this resolution. Chandra was a dedicated and a really great ally in the city of Chicago, and her level of sensitivity and care for the unhoused, for people in the city of Chicago is really... of sensitivity and care for the unhoused, for people in the City of Chicago is really a motivation for many of us to continue this work. On behalf of the Housing Committee or staff and our team who interacted on a, I would say, daily basis with Chandra, my deepest condolences to the family. Thank you for sharing her in this, in this moment. I think her example, her service really exemplified the public servants in the City of Chicago. For that, I'm grateful and I'm thankful for the family to be here and have the opportunity. So thank you on behalf of Chicago, the City of Chicago, and especially for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Thank you so much. My deepest condolences and prayers to you and the family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too would rise off of my words for Chandra. Chandra was a, was a great public servant, working out of 10 South Kedzie, dealing with people who were at some of their lowest points in life. But she did it with compassion. She did it with care. She treated everyone with dignity. She treated everyone with respect. She was a, as again, par excellence from a public servant perspective. And I can recall the times that we were in Garfield Park or most recently over on Displanes, where we were dealing with the unhoused. And again, the manner in which she dealt with people to help people again at some of their most trying times in life is something that the average person, I don't think, could do. But she did it every day with elegance. She did it with grace. She did it with ease. And she did it with a sense of purpose and respect. So again, to the family, while we know that your loss is, is great, the City of Chicago also has a great loss in the, in the legacy and the work that she's done. I have not had a chance to meet someone. She, as you said, we talk about people being irreplaceable, but we know that she has laid, made the bar for dealing in homeless services, homelessness services at a high level that whomever follows her will have difficulty. And if they do as half as what she did, they'll be doing a great job. Thank you and God bless, bless the family.
Thank you very much, Alderman Irvin. Alderwoman Haddon will have the final word unless there are any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution. All right, seeing no hands for the last speaker. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know I got to meet a few of the family members. Thank you for traveling here and thank you for your patience. Now you know what Chandra had to put up with all the time, right? She had to put up with a lot, lot of waiting. I share similar experiences as many of my colleagues. So Chandra is our go-to person in finding services for some of our constituents that we really don't know how to help. So you've heard some of my colleagues talk. I started in 2019. And when the pandemic struck, we had so many people experiencing homelessness, people living in parks, people who had never experienced homelessness before. And we relied heavily on Chandra and her team. So I know we've got the DFSS team here and in the, in the gallery, and I really appreciate you all. Our constituents look to us for answers. They look to us for resources. And contrary to popular belief, we don't know everything. We can't do everything. And we don't have all the answers. And we rely so heavily on all of our city workers and our support teams. And Chandra was one of those people. I'm a very personable person. I like to talk. I like to chat. I like to get to know people. I'm pretty friendly. And I like to crack like tough nuts, right? Chandra was a tough nut. I did not know any personal thing about her. Nothing. She never shared a personal thing about herself with me. She was business. She was direct. And she was just about the work. And I appreciate that too. Like I'm direct, so I can be direct. But you know, like you send somebody a little, you get, I got her cell phone number. So I know she didn't give it a lot. You know, I send her a little, hey, you know, Merry Christmas, or you know what, who is this? But I appreciated everything she puts towards all of her professional work. You know, even I'll say, when I found out she passed, you know, Maura sent an email. She shared it with us. I was really sad. You know, you don't know when people are going to go. But I reached out because I wanted to know, okay, well, what about services? You know, so I went looking online, found the obituary, found the funeral home, called the funeral home. They're like, oh, no, she didn't want anything. And I was mad. I was so mad. I'm like, even in passing, you are not going to let us have any access to your personal life. But cool, all right, consistent till the end. But you know, she was an example, most definitely, of the people who make the city work. I don't know what drove her. You guys know her better. I don't know what drove her, but certainly it was love and it was compassion. I don't know if it was faith or if it was duty. I don't know what it was. But she showed up all the time, right? She set an example. She helps us help our constituents. She helps us be a better city. And she helped to pioneer things that made solutions more available for people who needed it. I know that in order, like on a personal level, in order sometimes to be so giving and open of oneself and one time, sometimes that means you, you don't want to talk to anybody else. Sometimes it means you don't want to share a lot of yourself. And so I don't know if that was her deal, but I appreciated what she chose to share with us. And that was her intelligence, her dedication, her love and her commitment for the city. So I know that's the tone she's left behind with her coworkers and her colleagues. And I hope that we can continue to do her proud. And one of the things that we could do as a city council is to get more funding for homelessness support services. We could do that. I know times are tough, but we've had different things come up in this council multiple times and different efforts. And if we really want to honor Chandra Libby and the work and what she dedicated her life to, we can do better and do right by our constituents. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you all for coming here.
Thank you, Alderwoman. So for the individuals who have shown up today, thank you for being here. Just a couple of the names. Alan Mahone, thank you. Alvin Libby Jr., Alvin Libby Sr., Andrea Chapman, Cedric Neal, Christine Riley, Latonya Glass Libby, to some of the members of the team, Maura, Akali, thank you, Melody Driver, Nellie Mahone, Natasha Barrett, Nina Boston, Selena Ruiz. The City of Chicago had the privilege of having such a beloved servant for 16 years, Chandra Libby, the Department of Family and Support Services and the Emergency Services Division as Director of the Homeless Outreach Prevention. She expanded the homeless and prevention team to reach more unhoused, helped to strengthen outreach and championed so many different initiatives that would prove to be vital for those who were in need of services. During COVID-19 pandemic, Chandra worked on the front lines to ensure that unhoused residents had access to some of the very basic needs in life, protective equipment, healthcare, and housing. She truly was a strong and beloved advocate for the most vulnerable, the most vulnerable residents who are often overlooked. But no doubt, she reached out and touched countless people. We are all truly grateful that Chandra Libby decided to make her mark in Chicago, truly one of the greatest places on the planet, the city that she truly loved. I, along with the entire City of Chicago, we send our deepest condolences to the family and to the friends and all of those lives that she touched. And while we mourn this incredible loss, let us take comfort in her indelible contributions that will stay with us for generations to come. With that, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell for the passage of this resolution with a...
Mr. President, I move passage of this resolution by a rising vote.
Very well. Members, please rise. Here's to Chandra Libby. May her legacy live on. Again, thank you to this body for your patience today as we have gotten through multiple acknowledgements and resolutions. As the Libby family prepares to leave the box, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Now I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Just one second. Next up, we have Communications. Madam Clerk.
Communications from this Honored the Mayor to the Honorable City Council, City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and Transport here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the adaptive reuse project of the property located at 208 South LaSalle Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing and Transport here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance for the adaptive reuse and conversion project of property located at 111 West Monroe Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request Commissioner Planning and Development to transmit here with an ordinance authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement, the Chicago Park District to provide TIF funds for improvements at Petrowski Park. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Finance. I request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement with Chicago Park District to provide TIF funds for improvements at Douglas Park. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, refer to Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the continuation of single-room occupancy, SOR loan fund. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a neighborhood opportunity fund redevelopment agreement with MAAFA Redemption Project Incorporated. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Budget Director, I transmit here a Fund 925 Amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing favorable property tax incentive classifications for specified properties located within the city. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Economic Capital Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Transportation, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 3901 South Halsted Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with ordinances authorizing sale of specified city-owned properties. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing acquisition of five parcels located at 7850 7872 South Exchange Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I have appointed Princella Gerube Lee as a Board of the Trustees of Community College District Number 508 for a term effective immediately and expiring 30, our June 30th, 2027, to succeed Loretzia Lopez, whose term has expired. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance appointment will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Education and Child Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I appointed Aida Gayadco as a member of the Board of Health for a term effective immediately and expiring April 30th, 2028, such as the period allocated as following a term effective immediately and expiring April 30th, 2025, to succeed Oscar Ivan Sabrano, who has resigned to follow immediately by a full three-term, three-year term. Your favorable consideration of this appointment will be appreciated very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor for the Committee on Health and Human Relations. I City Clerk, Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council, the following documents were filed in my office relating to the respective subjects as noted as follows. Determination Certificate of City of Chicago Regarding Revolving Line of Credit Agreement by and Amongst City of Chicago, RBC Capital Markets LLC and Royal Bank of Canada as to note of December 28, 2023. Aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed $225 million and Determination Certificate of City of Chicago Regardless, or Regarding Wells Fargo Bank National Associationist Revolving Line of Credit Amendment of December 29, 2021, an aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed $265,500 million. I City Clerk, Valencia, also inform the City Council of all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on February 19, 2025, which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, and one or more newspapers were published in pamphlet form on March 2012, 2025, and being printed in full text and pamphlet copies in the journal proceedings of the City Council, City of Chicago. I City Clerk, Valencia, also inform the City Council of the ordinance which was passed by the City Council on February 26, 2025, regarding the issuance of general obligation bonds to finance improvements to public rights of way infrastructure and transportation, loans and grants, acquisition of property, construction, the maintenance of, of public buildings, economic programs, and lead service line replacements, and which was requested to be published in a special pamphlet, was published in special pamphlet form on March 4, 2025. I City Clerk, Valencia, also transmit here with the following miscellaneous communications and reports requiring City Council action. Zoning reclassifications of particular areas referred to Committee on zoning landmarks and building standards, claims against City of Chicago referred to Committee on Finance. Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications to the Mayor and other city officers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Committee reports. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on March 10, 2025, the following items received a due pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning the issuance of financial assistance to UNAH Irving Park LP for the Jigsabik at 2909 through 2917 West Irving Park Road in the 33rd Ward. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this matter, I move passage by roll call vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. The voting is now open. If you need support, please raise your hand. I will now call on those who have not used their e-device. Alderman Robinson.
Robinson's a yes.
Robinson is a yes. Alderman Mosley. Mosley not present. Alderman Burnett. Burnett not present. Alderman Cardona. Cardona not present. Alderman Spasato. Alderman Spasato?
Next, Spasato's a yes.
Spasato is a yes. Anyone else I missed? Okay. The voting is now closed.
There are 47 yays, zero nays. This motion is passed. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance amending the TIF Works Program to enter into an agreement with Employment and Employer Services, Inc. as program administrator, change the name to Workforce Solutions Program, approve the expenditure of TIF funding to additional eligible TIF areas, and expand the scope of the program. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number 3A is an ordinance authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Boyd versus Jovanovic et al., case number 24CV6121, in the amount of $280,000. I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of Alderman Hopkins, Alderman Quinn, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Shea, Alderman Cardona, Alderman Spazado, and Alderman Silverstein, who all wish to be recorded as voting no on this item.
Very well. There's a motion for a roll-call vote here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. If you need support, please raise your hand. The voting is now open. I will now call on those who did not use the e-device. Alderman Robinson.
Robinson's a yes.
Robinson is a yes. Alderman Burnett, not present. Alderman Spazado.
Next Spazado is a no.
Spazado is a no. All right, anyone else? Voting is now closed.
The thirty-four yays, fifteen nays, this motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number three B is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Erachel Miang versus City of Chicago, Charles Galvin, case number 2021L002785, in the amount of $400,000. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll-call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to record it as a yes on the first roll-call vote.
Very well. Alderman Mosley should be added as a yea, yes vote on the first item. And the subsequent failure, the reconsideration of that first item. Alderman Cardona, would you also like to be added on that roll-call as well? Please add Alderman Cardona as well. Hearing no objections on that particular item, so ordered.
Number three C is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Leah Johns, a special administrator of the estate of Minion Robinson, deceased, and Kevin Jones versus City of Chicago, Officer Rudolpho Elizondo, Officer Angel Escobedo, and Maxwell Paxton, case number 21L001359, in the amount of $1 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item three D is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Tashina Island as an independent administrator of the estate of Isel Ricky Island, deceased, versus City of Chicago, Officer Acevedo, Officer Hernandez, and Officers Farrell, case number 2021L000988, in the amount of 1.5 million. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number four is the communication transmitting reports of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were entered into for the month of February 2025. These will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number five and six consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago and the denial of payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago. If there are no objections, Mr. President, I move that these items be placed in the passage in the omnibus.
Hearing none, so ordered.
That concludes my report from the committee.
Very well. Thank you. Next, as a matter of courtesy, is this family still here? Thank you. Next, as a matter of courtesy, due to our appointee for Commissioner to the Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection, Ivan Capafali, his guest having a time commitment that requires them to have to leave within the next couple of moments. So with that, the Chair recognizes Chairwoman Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm here reporting for your Committee on License and Consumer Protection, which met on Tuesday, March 4, 2025, at 10:30 a.m. Mr. President, I intend to split this committee report into two parts, due to the time commitment for Ivan and his guests. I have asked that we hear the item appointing Ivan Capafali as Commissioner of the Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection now, and we will hear the rest of the items when the License Committee is called in its normal alphabetical place. For now, the committee recommends the passage of the following item. Item one is a communication appointing Ivan Capafali as Commissioner of Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. I'm sure, including myself, I'd like to say a few words, and I'm sure there's other people.
Very well. Would you like to go last, Chairwoman?
I'll go first.
All right. Chair recognizes again Chairwoman Silverstein.
So I just wanted to say that I'm very proud to support you, Ivan. I know that you have been working in the city for twenty-nine years. You've been working side by side with me since I've been Alderman, and now even more as the Chairman of License, and I appreciate everything you and your incredible staff have done for us, and I know this is long overdue, and I just wanted to wish you a huge congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Mitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too rise in support of this appointment, Mr. Mayor. Think that it's an excellent appointment to have Ivan to be able to leave, or Commissioner to leave this department that came from within the department, so he definitely knows what he's doing, and he has a great team that's working with him to make sure that we get things done. So thank you, Ivan. Looking forward to more of those late-night calls that I'm putting into you, because we got to take care of all these bad actors out here in the neighborhood. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Chairman Viegas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to be associated with this appointment as well. I've had the pleasure of working with Ivan for a few years, specifically around the tow trucking, rogue towing ordinance, and looking forward to continuing to build on that, as we try to eliminate the status of number one in the country around rogue towing. This is an industry that takes advantage of consumers and speeds around the city chasing accidents, and as a result of that, unfortunately, we have the title of number one. The one thing I would mention that I'm very proud of as well is that Ivan is a veteran, and this is the only veteran right now that sits in the mayor's cabinet, and he happens to be from one of the best branches of the service, which is the U.S. Marine Corps. So very excited to support his appointment. And so Marine, looking forward to continue to work with you and try to solve some of the issues that are plaguing the city. So congratulations again.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Ruth Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in support of this appointment. Ivan Capifali, Commissioner Capifali, congratulations. I am proud for the work that we have been doing together and for the partnership that we have been building, and I thank you for making the process so much easier for me coming in, and again, the things that we have worked and the great work we have done and the obstacles that we have encountered, but your commitment to the city and to the 30th Ward as a resident of the 30th Ward, I have to highlight that as well. It has been a great honor to work with you, and I look forward to working on our partnership, working on the things that we need to change in the city and the opportunities for all of our businesses, but thank you and your team, who also has been a great partner to us. Again, felicidades. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
I tried to snag this appointment from a chair, Silverstein was unsuccessful. We do a lot of work together. Ivan, whether it was back with your crew with PTO or One Fair Wage, and now hopefully with this rideshare ordinance, you know, I got to know your staff and yourself very, very well. I'm incredibly impressed. Today is a good day for the City of Chicago, and not just because you have a great haircut, but also because you do great work. Thank you so much for your service, and I look forward to continuing on to making Chicago a better place with you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairman Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yeah, want to commend you on this appointment. Sometimes we feel like things should be moving quicker, but I'm really glad to see you in the position of Commissioner. I want to thank you for the work that you've been doing and look forward to partnering with you when we talk about holding some of the Airbnb managers accountable. I'll be nice and say that, but also in thinking about how we support our local chambers when they are concerned about what their funding's going to look like year over year. I think really having the conversations early in the year allows us to partner better in that, and so I look forward to that, as well as really looking at what expanded outdoor dining can look like, as well as some of the street vendors and figuring out legislation there. So really, really proud, really happy as the Vice Chair of the Latino Caucus, also to see more representation and leadership is something we're always going to be pleased and proud to see, and so, family, I'm so glad you're here to see this moment for Commissioner Capifali, and look forward to more work together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Haddon.
Commissioner. Thank you for your continued service. We've had an opportunity today to honor several public servants. I am excited that you want this job. So congrats. Thank you for agreeing to do it, and I think you're going to excel at this position. You're going to continue to serve the City of Chicago. I've appreciated you and your team's dedication, your expertise, and your responsiveness, and I, you know, Mr. President, wholeheartedly support your choice in this. I think it's wonderful to make sure that we have experienced people coming up in our departments to take the leadership in this moment. So we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand to be associated with this appointment. It's exciting to see a fellow Boricua be a member of your cabinet. Look, Ivan has been a part of the department for a while, and before becoming the Acting Commissioner, he took on programs to ensure that we seen small business growth in the Latino community, and Division Street, now known as Baseo Boricua, state-designated cultural district, has seen the most growth in small businesses, particularly by Latina women, than we have seen in the last decade, thanks to partners like Ivan and his team, who are creative in their ability to imagine programs that are going to attract people to commercial corridors, that are going to increase tourism to the City of Chicago. Someone as brilliant and as creative as Ivan deserves to be the Commissioner of BACP. I'm excited to watch him lead the department and watch small businesses grow across the City of Chicago, and I want to thank his family, because you're about to share Ivan with the City of Chicago, and that's going to mean he's away from home a ton, but he's going to do great things for the business community. He's going to help Alders ensure that we can continue to build out our communities and that residents can get everything that they need in the local geography in which they live in and call home. So I'm excited about this appointment. I support this appointment, and I'm here to support you, Commissioner, and anything that you need. Congratulations.
Thank you. Alderman Curtis is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ivan, thank you so much for all you do. We talk all the time from the old school. I'm glad you're here in this position. Now you don't jump up and leave us, too, okay? Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Raymond Lopez is recognized.
It's almost good evening, Mr. President. And good afternoon, members of the City Council and Commissioner. I, it's not every day, Mr. President, I get to stand up and commend you on your choices, but today's, in this moment, is one of those days, because I believe that Ivan Capifali is the right man for the right job at the right time. I know, I have worked with him my entire career here in this chamber, whether it was going after stray dogs or going after bad businesses. And I know while many of my colleagues are speaking of the importance of having someone who understands how to bring business and support business and deal with regulation, there's another part of his mission that he's been excelling at, which is enforcement and dealing with individuals who are operating illegal businesses in our community, whether they are vendors who are putting the mom-and-pop stores, the brick-and-mortar stores in financial disarray, whether they are the illegal gentleman's clubs and nightclubs and things that are popping up, the illegal spaces of amusement. He is there. His team has been there. His department has been there, leading the charge, and even showing up to ensure that once we shut someone down, that they stay shut down, as we ourselves just experienced last week. That kind of dedication, that kind of intentionality, excuse me, and that attention to being proactive is something that we need now more than ever, and even with the various challenges that face business and various regulations, as I'm sure we'll get to, being able to make sure that the department is there at the table to have a conversation is just as important. And I thank you for that. I thank you for that in making this decision, and I know that his family will continue to be proud of him. I'm sure they already are familiar with the fact that he's a 25-hour-a-day kind of guy, so that's nothing that we expect to change, but I know on behalf of the 15th Ward and my team, we congratulate you, thank you, and look forward to your service for years to come. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Alderman Irvin is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll write this down. Ray and you have something in common today, so we'll make sure we write this down. But nonetheless, this is an excellent appointment with for Commissioner. As you know, he's probably, most of our new Alders, this department will probably be the second or third department that you'll work with the most, and it is important that you have someone at the helm that understands the challenges that we're facing in our respective communities, answers to them, and helps us solve the problems that our communities face, and Ivan has done that throughout his tenure, even before he was Commissioner and currently as Commissioner. So again, thank you for your stepping up to take on this challenge. We know you're up to the point, up to the challenge, and again, we appreciate everything that you're doing and whatever we can do to make your job better and help our citizens more. Please let us know. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to keep it brief. I know you guys have been waiting a long time, but I could not not stand up and just pay you some respect on this. Ivan, you stepped into the role when Ken retired, and I'm so happy to be here with you today, making it official that you are the Commissioner of the Business Affairs and Consumer Protection. In the short time that I've known you, you've been nothing but supportive and responsive to any calls that we may get anytime regarding stuff going on in the ward. I know there's still a few things we want to tackle together, and I'm looking forward to doing that with you and your incredible team, the team all behind you. I know they've got your back, and they've got the backs of the cities, and I'm so glad that they have you for a leader. Thank you for letting us borrow your dad, and I know he's away a lot, but he's fighting the good fight out here for you and for the entire City of Chicago. So thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Segcho Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also like to rise in support of this appointment. I want to congratulate you and your family, Commissioner. It is, it is in the time that you being in the department is being a pleasure to work with you. You are responsive, you're sensitive, you're competent. It's great to see promotions within the department, and I'm so proud as a Latino to have you as Commissioner. So thank you. Congratulations to you and your family, and thank you Chairman for, President for this appointment.
Very well. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will make it very brief. Ivan, thank you to your service to the city. Thank you for all the work that your team, your staff does for always being accessible, always being professional, always working with the 45th Ward. Anytime we call you out, it is greatly appreciated, and I look forward to continue working with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Chair. Ivan, we are so proud.
Ivan, we are so proud of your work. We are so grateful for your work. Thank you for saying yes. To continue, I am excited to continue working with you and to all that we look forward to accomplishing with you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Manah Happenworth, Alderwoman Manah Happenworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to commend you on this appointment and to say congratulations. Thank you for accepting. And to the family, thank you for being here. This is going to be an exciting journey for you. I also wanted to thank the team behind you as you have really made this department very important in this moment right now where we are struggling, our small business corridors really need you. So we're expecting you to lead this department, to lead the city of Chicago. And again, to the family, I really appreciate that you're here. This is going to be a lot of fun. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Alderwoman Dowler is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ivan, I just wanted to congratulate you, look forward to working with you more and to Mayor Johnson, I just want to applaud you on this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this? The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Kapfali, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing for the city of Chicago. Thank you for helping us revive those corridors of businesses in the 14th Ward. Thank you for being transparent and letting us share all the information the BACP have to, to continue to help our constituents to open a business. Thank you for having materials in English and Spanish and, and many other languages so that way it's more accessibility for them. Thank you for all the great work. Thank you for taking our calls late evenings during the weekends. We appreciate you and your whole team and the great work that you're doing. And I know and I'm sure that you're going to excel as a Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Coleman is recognized.
Mr. President, congratulations. I think you might be the longest-serving Acting Commissioner in the city of Chicago, but certainly I look forward to not only your leadership, but to your Deputy Commissioner and he or she, she, who will be filling your footsteps within this role. Certainly this office should be used for rewarding good businesses and definitely holding those bad actors accountable here in the city of Chicago. So on behalf of the Chicago Automatic Act Caucus, we look forward to working with you and can't wait for you to address our body soon.
Thank you. Alderman Mosley is recognized.
Thank you, President. Just want to say, Commissioner, congratulations. You've made your family proud and we know you're going to succeed and make Chicago proud. Congrats.
Very well. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this nomination? Mr. Clerk, Alderman Burnett has requested her Rule 59 to participate remotely. Can we confirm that he is on remotely?
Alderman Burnett, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, can I get a motion for the ability for Alderman Burnett? It's been moved. All those in favor of allowing for remote participation for Alderman Burnett signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Alderman Burnett also is requested to be added to the most favorable roll call in the Finance Committee and of course the subsequent failure of the reconsideration of that vote. All right, the Chair recognizes Chairwoman Silverstein on your motion.
Yes. Once again, thank you Ivan and to the entire family. And Mr. President, I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Congratulations, Ivan. Next committee, we will go back to our regular order. The next committee be Budget and Government Operations in just one moment. Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of City Council reporting for your committee on the Budget and Government Operations were held a meeting on March 10th, 2025. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item number one is a communication regarding the proposed ordinance concerning an annual appropriation ordinance year 2025 amendment within Fund 925. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is a communication regarding the proposed ordinance concerning a redevelopment agreement with Cupa Joe Coffee LLC to provide neighborhood opportunity funds to build a coffee roaster, roastery, beer production facility and retail cafe and taproom in the 9th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items three through 12 are transfers of funds within the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, the 8th Ward, the 23rd Ward, Committee on Health and Human Relations, Committee on, I'm sorry, the 33rd Ward, 33rd Ward Wage Allowance. Also again, a second one on the Committee of Health and Human Relations, the 34th Ward, the 38th Ward, the 41st Ward and the 44th Ward. Same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, one other item I want to introduce, two new members of the Council Office of Financial Analysis. We have Ms. Katie O'Toole and Chloe Mee with us today. Two will stand up. Wanted to recognize them. Those are two members of our COFA team. So you, I'm sure you all will be in conversation and they will be looking to see each and every one of you as members of the council. So again, that concludes my report. Anything else, please let us know. Also, I did leave something on everyone's desk. If you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you too for joining us today and keeping a smile for the last five hours. Chair recognizes our next committee, which is Economic Capital Technology Development. The Chair recognizes Chairman Viegas.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the City Council. Reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which met on Thursday, March 6th, 2025. The committee held a meeting and here are recommendation, recommended passage of the follow, here, here are the recommended items for passage of the following items. Items one and two on the report are a series of tax incentives approved by the committee. Item one on the report is an ordinance in support of a Class 6B tax incentive for property at 1001 West 119th Street in the 21st Ward. And item two on the report is an ordinance in support of a Class L tax incentive for property at 2135 North Milwaukee Avenue in the 1st Ward. I move for pass of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, I would also add that the Chicago Tech and Innovation Task Force met. As a result of that, a lot of deliberations, a lot of discussions around technology and innovation. And for members of this body that are interested in participating in the next quarterly meeting, please email my office. Per the Open Meetings Act, however, only the first four respondents are able to attend because we have to make sure that we're, we're adhering to the Open Meetings Act. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman. For the Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Vice Chair Mitchell is recognized.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held an in-person meeting on March 5th, 2025. The committee has a series of reports recommending the passage of eight ordinances. This includes various negotiated sale, land sales and amendment to redevelopment agreement and two lease renewals. The first item is from the Department of Housing, Ordinance 2025-0014974. First Amendment to Heritage Point 2 Redevelopment Agreement for Sale of Additional Lots at 3355, 3353, 3337, 3335, 3333, 3325, 3209, 2307 and 310, 3310 West Walnut Street to Developers Judah Investment LLC, MKB Business Strategies LLC and Judah Investments LLC/MKB Business Strategies LLC under the City Lots for Working Families Program located in the 28th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next item, next two items are grouped together from the Department of Fleet and Facilities Management. Item two is Ordinance 2025-0015537, Tenant Renewed Lease Agreement with Sticks Chicago LLC for Property at 6348 South Archer Avenue located in the 23rd Ward. And item three is Ordinance 2025-0015542, Renewed Lease Agreement with Sit Stay Re, Inc. for Use of City Property at 20, at 2861 North Clark located in the 44th Ward. I move passage of these two items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next is an automatic introduction. Item four is Ordinance 2025-0015412, Designation of 1310 South Ashland Avenue as Low Affordability Community located in the 28th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The final four items are from the Department of Planning and Development. Items five and six are market rate sales of vacant city-owned land, Ordinance 2025-0015545 and Ordinance 2025-0015546 located in the 17th and 27th Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seven is Ordinance 2025-0015548, Sale of City-Owned Property at 629 North Parkside Avenue to GSJ Family Life Center under Shai Block Builder Platform for Construction of Fenced Community Garden located in the 29th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The last item is Substitute Ordinance 2025-0014971, Sale of City-Owned Properties at 3312, 3318, 3320, 3328, 3334, 3336, 3338, 3342 and 3344 West Lake Street to Firebird Community Arts Support Corporation under Shai Block Builder Platform for Construction of Community Arts Centers located in the 28th Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The Committee on Licensed Consumer Protection, the Chair recognizes Chairwoman Silverstein.
Mr. President, I'm continuing the report for your committee on license and consumer protection, which met on Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 at 10:30 a.m. The committee recommends passage of the following items. Item two is a substitute ordinance amending municipal code titled, Title IV by adding new chapter 4-401 entitled Trade in Fur Products. Alderman Coleman, O'Shea and Cardona are opposed and I believe that there are some people here that would like to speak on this.
Okay, before, has a motion been made yet?
Do we want to discuss first or do we? Move to pass. I'll make a motion to pass.
It's okay, it's okay. All right. So for this particular item, there's been a request for a roll call vote for this item. Mr. Clerk, if you could make the e-vote. Yep. Does anyone wish to speak before we vote on this item? All right, very well. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in opposition of this ordinance. You all, if passed, this will be, have such a devastating economic consequence to our city's small businesses and it really is, it restricts consumer choice. You all, Chicago has had a long history, not only for our great food, but for fashion and retail, and this ordinance would undermine that legacy. It represents one of the most extreme fur ban ordinance in the nation. It goes beyond just the sale of furs, but it prohibits the sale of UG boots. Gentlemen, every woman in your life has a pair of UG boots, I want you to know. This ordinance is misguided and the premise of the argument is based on fur farms and production practices that are not relevant to the retailers here in Chicago. If the goal is to ban fur, there is already a bill in the Illinois General Assembly that is addressing that issue, but for black women. Furs are about embracing elegance in the world that has not been kind to us. It is about pride and strength and ability to access a luxury item. Chairman Mince, for black people that migrated from the South to Chicago, it was about financial security and owning a fur represented a significant milestone, not only to personal success, but also to the new world. It's more than a luxury fashion statement, it's a treasured piece of wealth, Alderman Clay, that we can leave to our daughters and from generation to generation. You all, Chicago is the home of the only black-owned independent furrier in the nation and that is Island Furs on 103rd Street. And this will immediately close the doors of this 30-plus-year business that Gerard Brown has succeeded from Deacon Berry at Emmanuel Christian School, at Emmanuel Christian Church. It will immediately close his doors that he doesn't, and just so that we're clear, he doesn't just sell a product, he creates arts, provides jobs, pays taxes and invests in our community. Colleagues, I urge you to reject this ordinance and let's support policies that uplift businesses rather than shut them down. Let's respect consumer choice rather than dictate personal decisions and let us protect Chicago's rich retail and fashion industry rather than dismantle it. And let's focus on policies that actually matter to people in this great city of Chicago. Thank you, Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance banning fur in Chicago, it's not about public safety. It's not about public health. Rather, it's an effort to dictate the moral standards of Chicagoans. What's next? Are we going to ban leather? Are we going to ban beef? Are we going to close McDonald's across our city? I've got two furriers in my community. When I walked in this morning, my colleague next to me with a beautiful voice, Alderman Taylor was singing the Adriana Furs song. I'll sing it for you. Get the warmth and luxury that you deserve, Adriana Furs. Now I personally don't own any fur coats, but I have a second furrier and he's here today, Mr. Gerard Brown. Thank you, sir. Gerard is an artist, as my colleague pointed out. He didn't, doesn't just own a furrier business, he's an artist. He's been a member of my community for more than 30 years. I represent the 19th Ward, a very diverse community. If this ordinance goes through, there will be two businesses that close their doors. That's jobs, that's sales tax. That's another example of why businesses don't want to locate in the city. That's another example of why businesses don't want to locate in the city of Chicago. I urge all of you, don't support this ordinance. We need to do more. We need to do more to support our business community. If there's people in this room that want to focus on public safety, to support our public schools, to support development and businesses, I'm all in. But to dictate what people buy at a local store? Come on, folks, we're better than that. Thank you.
You gotta sing it again, first.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, and again, members of the City Council. Obviously, I rise in support of this amended compromise ordinance that we are here discussing today. But we need to clear up a few things first. We've heard individuals say that this is about government overreach and undue regulation on business, that the City Council has no business doing this. In today's meeting alone, this agenda contains ninety seven business regulations as of right now, to date. Every month, we issue things, whether it's for moratoriums, whether it's for what you can sell in your neighborhood, whether it's what kind of zoning, what kind of commercial. That is the job of this body, to regulate, to, to set guidelines for what our expectations are in our communities. That isn't new, and we do it a thousand times over every single day. Finance has one, budget has one, econ has two, housing has three, license has ten, pedestrian traffic safety sixteen, transportation has fourteen, zoning has fifty items before, that all relate to business. We, in this body, have regulated business and have made, as my colleague said, moral judgments when it comes to our natural resources and what consumers have access to. We've made laws that deal with microplastics. We've made laws that deal with disposable cutlery, single use condiment packets, plastic shopping bags, electronic recycling, and that's just to name a few that anyone could Google within five minutes of what this body has done. I understand that there's also a cultural relevance. And I'm glad to see one of the artists of fur here today. But it would have been wonderful to have him, other furriers, or even some of the opponents in this room, join us for a conversation when every invitation and effort was made to sit down with everybody for eighteen months. Even this week, we opened our doors yet again so that we could have a conversation, so we could hear and discuss what our plans were, what our vision was, what their concerns were, and how do we help do what the goal of this ordinance is, which is not to put people out of business, but to help an industry that is on the decline prepare for the twenty first century. Because, ladies and gentlemen, the facts state quite clearly that fur is, natural fur, is on the decline. Maximized market research showed in twenty twenty three that fur consumption was down forty percent. Forty percent sales drop, twenty twenty three. Additionally, when we look at market share in the United States as it relates to natural fur products, in twenty twenty three was valued at four hundred and forty six, uh, excuse me, when we look at alter for fur alternatives, allow me to correct myself. The market share for fur alternatives in twenty twenty three by the same market analyst was at four hundred and forty six million dollars. They anticipate by twenty thirty, which is mere five years away, that the market share for full fur products will triple, triple, to one point three billion dollars. We want to make sure that as we're having this discussion, that Chicago is not left behind. We are not left behind where the fashion industry is going, because the fashion industry has clearly moved away from natural fur products. As we know that Calvin Klein, Kenneth Cole, Tommy Hilfiger, Ralph Lauren, Hugo Boss, Armani, Gucci, Michael Kors, Michael Kors, Timberland, Burlington, The North Face, TJ Maxx, Coach, Burberry, Prada, Macy's, Walmart, Neiman Marcus, Dolce Gabbana, and about fifty other major retailers have all moved away from natural fur. We know that even in Chicago, the Chicago Fashion Council has said in full support that we need to do this because we are moving away from this commodity. We also know, ladies and gentlemen, that in cities that have also done similar bans, that those industries were able to evolve with help of the fashion industry because we know that there is still a sizable market for both the cleaning, maintaining, as well as repair of current existing fur products. In some cases, some businesses, that's eighty percent of their revenue. So we are not forcing the doors closed on anyone. And we have said time and time again that even with a delayed one year enforcement of this ordinance, we are more than happy to help businesses, the six businesses in Chicago, transition. Unlike other things that we have done, this is not trying to put people out of business. We are trying to help business evolve. Twenty-two members of this body joined on as co-sponsors. Every member has been reached out, in some cases, two dozen ti- uh, two dozen times, to try to set up meetings. We have done work to try to be as inclusive and open, and even amended it to what some of the concerns of this body have been. I know that some will say we have more important things to do. And I appreciate those who say things like public safety should take precedent. And trust me, I think I'm an expert on dealing with public safety. But I also know this body knows how to walk and chew gum at the same time. And, but I also know this, when we look at many of the issues we're seeing in our communities, when we see the violence, the bloodshed, or even just the day when this committee met, we had a fifteen year old student shot going to school. What we know is that at the root of so much of what is going on in our communities is that our children, our society, has lost its sense of compassion and empathy for one another. Compassion and empathy, folks. How do you have young people have no empathy for another person to the point where they have no problem shooting them dead as they come out of their school? Where's the compassion that we can teach to show love and respect for one another? This is a teachable moment. This, yes, is about morality. There's no argument, but this is our moment to show how things are all related, because they are absolutely related. I call on all of you to understand and join in this effort because there are products, there are things that are different, and yes, change is hard. But we also need to showcase to our children, to Chicagoans, that this body can also stand for having compassion and empathy and how we deal with all things alive moving forward. And I would ask for your favorable vote on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this item? Seeing no other hands. Does the Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I quite frankly think you made the argument. Uh, if the business is going to die, then let it die. Uh, it makes no sense for us to kill something that you believe is, is on its way out. Um, I will say this, um, I generally don't get calls from our churches and other members of the community besides water. I get calls on, on this. And I think it goes back to what, uh, uh, Chair Coleman stated about the cultural differences in the community and what this means to a lot of people. Uh, and today, I, I just don't understand, uh, why we would do this if I can go to Evergreen Park or step across to Oak Park or go to Evanston and do something. This is not the venue for that type of, uh, regulation. That regulation, if there's something going on in Springfield, then let that be. Uh, I just don't believe that, uh, we need to be regulating, uh, this in that way when we know it's going to have a negative impact on certain communities. Keep this in mind, ladies and gentlemen, this city was founded by a fur trader. I mean, let, let's think about that. Let's think about that. This city was founded by a black man who was a fur trader. And I don't think that historically this makes a lot of sense for us. And again, I, I believe if this business or the change, the times will change. Uh, I don't see them selling many hula hoops anymore. I don't see them selling many yo-yos anymore, many click clacks, whatever it was that was the fad or the thing then. It takes care of itself, and I don't think we need to hasten or, uh, accelerate the death of anything. And if it's going to go, let it go on its own. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this item? Very well, there's a motion on the floor. Um, there's a point of information the Chair recognizes, Alderman Moore. Oh, hold on a second, Alderman Moore. I thank you, Alderman Moore, uh, for that point of clarification or desire. So there's a motion on the floor, but there's also been a call for a, for the passage of this item, but it's also been a mo- a motion for a roll call vote. And thank you to the Clerk's team for providing the e-vote application preparation. Members, please use your e-vote application at this time to record your vote.
Voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device and cast your vote. I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alderperson Robinson. Alderwoman Ramirez, oh, just did. Alderman Sigcho Lopez. Alderman Burnett.
No.
Alderman Burnett is a no. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Spazado.
Next Spazado is a yes.
Nick, Alderman Spazado is a yes. Alderwoman Nugent. Not present. Alderwoman Clay. Not present. Alderman Martin. Alderman Martin is a yes. Everyone voted who is in chambers. Voting is now closed.
There are twenty-six nays and nineteen yays. This motion fails. Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Most of the reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration, reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. All of those opposed say no. This motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Silverstein.
There are eight ordinances regarding liquor moratoriums in the first, fifteenth, sixteenth, twenty eighth, thirty third, thirty fifth, and forty ninth ward. The committee has recommended passage of each of these items, oh, two zero two five dash zero zero one five five seven nine, and others ending one five five seven five, one five zero three seven, one five zero three eight, one five four one seven, one five zero five five, one five six nine zero, and one five five two seven.
Second, Madam Chair, could we just have just a little, little more decorum, you all, please? Please continue.
I move passage of, of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Oh, two zero two five dash zero zero one five five seven six was held in committee. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next committee, committee on pedestrian and traffic safety. The Chair recognizes Chair Laspada.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for your committee on pedestrian and traffic safety, for which a meeting was held on Tuesday, March fourth, twenty twenty five. Before the committee, there were one hundred and forty-four routine traffic items, all of which passed. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee on Special Events and Cultural Affairs. Chair recognizes Vice Chairwoman Scott.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on special events, cultural affairs, and re- and recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, which held a meeting on March tenth, twenty twenty five. The committee recommends passage of the following appointments to the Special Events and Cultural Affairs Advisory Council. Eight two oh, eight two twenty five oh oh one, zero zero one, sorry, four eight six seven, Camille Bacon. Eight two oh two five zero zero one four eight 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 eight. Diane Dickens Carr. Eight two oh two five zero zero one four eight nine oh. Leslie Honoree. Eight T, eight two oh two five zero zero one four eight nine two. Tony Carmen. Eight two oh two five zero zero one four nine, four eight nine four. Richard Logan and eight two oh two five zero zero one four eight nine five. Patrick McCoy. I move passage of these items by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful, successful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. For the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, Chair recognizes Chairman Mitchell.
Mr. President, a member of the City Council, reporting for your committee on transportation in public way, which held a meeting on March fifth, twenty twenty five. The following items passed by the majority of the members present. Pages two and three included sixteen ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local alderman from wards two, three, fourteen, sixteen, twenty four, twenty eight, twenty nine, thirty two, thirty five, thirty six, forty four, forty five, forty eight, and fifty. Page four includes item ordinance two zero two five, zero zero one five seven four eight, a transportation ordinance for a property located in the forty second ward. Page five includes item ordinance two zero two five, zero zero one five two eight seven, a vacation ordinance for a property located in the tenth ward. Item ordinance two zero two five, zero zero one five four seven five, a vacation ordinance for a property located in the twentieth ward, and item ordinance two zero two five, zero zero one five six one four, an in-use restriction ordinance for a property located in the twenty seventh ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, the Chair recognizes Vice Chair Lawson.
Good afternoon, uh, Mr. President. Members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on March eleventh, twenty twenty five. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Page one contains document number oh, twenty twenty five dash zero zero one five five three nine, the historical landmark designation for the Rector Building located at seventy nine West Monroe Street. I move passage of this item by the last most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains document number oh, twenty twenty five dash zero zero one five five three nine, the adopt a landmark grant funding agreement with First Baptist Congregational Church of Chicago for preservation work at sixteen thirteen West Washington Boulevard, sixty North Ashland Avenue. I move passage of this item by the same motion with the excepted, exception of Chair Burnett and Alderwoman Emma Mitz, who recuse themselves from this item under provisions of Rule thirts, I'm sorry, fourteen, out of abundance of caution. Chairman Burnett is a deacon at this church, and Alderwoman Mitz is a member.
Very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains document number oh, twenty twenty five dash zero zero one five five four three, the adopt a landmark grant funding agreement with Greater Union Baptist Church for preservation work at nineteen fifty- Church for Preservation Work at 1956 West Warren Boulevard. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Moving on, pages one through two contain various large signs over 100 square feet in area 24 feet above grade in the Eleventh, Twenty-second, Twenty-third, Twenty-fourth, Twenty-seventh, Twenty-eighth, Thirty-second, Forty-first, and Forty-second Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Lastly, pages two through thirteen contain various map amendments in the First, Fifth, Tenth, Eleventh, Thirteenth, Fifteenth, Seventeenth, Twenty-fifth, Twenty-seventh, Twenty-eighth, Twenty-ninth, Thirty-sixth, Thirty-seventh, Thirty-eighth, Fortieth, Forty-fourth, and Forty-seventh Wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for the agreed-upon calendar. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've received from Clerk Andrea M. Valencia a total of 93 items proposed for the agreed calendar, consisting of congratulatory commemorative tributary resolutions from Clerk Valencia and the following Alder Persons. Alder Person Harris, Alder Person Chico, Alder Person Quinn, Alder Person Coleman, Alder Person O'Shea, Alder Person Mosley, Alder Person Tabarez, Alder Person Mitz, Alder Person Nugent, Alder Person Gardner, Alder Person Haddon. I move these in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For new business, the Clerk will begin with the First Ward.
Zoning amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Exemption from physical barrier requirements for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Laspada has proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the First Ward automatic expense wage allowance account, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alder Person Laspada, Alder Person Martin, and Alder Person Manahah Hoppenworth have a proposed resolution to call for hearings on the city's process for sidewalk repairs, which is referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Alder Persons Lawson and Hopkins have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Chapter four dash four by adding a new section four dash four dash three three nine to prohibit any licensee, not a medical cannabis dispensing organization, from calling itself a dispensary cannabis dispensary, dispensary organization, or cultivator, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Two committees called, the Committee on License and the Committee on Rules, matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alder Person Hopkins has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Section four dash four dash three thirty-one by adding new near north side as prohibited area for cannabinoid hemp products, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Two committees called, the Committee on License and the Committee on Committees and Rules, matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alder Person Dahl has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 2101 South State Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Lopez has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Section two dash two forty-four dash one forty to prohibit peddling on portions of 47th Street, Alston Street, California Avenue, 51st Street, 55th Street, Western Avenue, 59th Street, 63rd Street, and Market Road, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alder Person Coleman has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honest John and Alitha Mae Oliphant Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Coleman also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Mother Virgia Jones Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Coleman also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Triopia Tree Thomas Lane, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Persons Coleman, Tabarez, and Cardona have a proposed resolution to call on Commonwealth Edison Presidents to appear before the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations to discuss MBE WWE usage and spending for the years 2022 through 2024, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alder Person Taylor has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Dr. Margaret T. Burrows Drive, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Taylor also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package goods licenses on portion of South Cottage Grove Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alder Person Mosley has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Maple Parkway, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Mosley also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 8652 South Lafayette Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Mosley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Section seventeen dash six dash zero four zero three F to require special use permits for daycare and community centers and gardens, and buy-write permits for artist workspace, food and beverage retail, and medical services in Plan Manufacturing District Number Ten, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Mosley also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Title Nine by modifying Section nine dash one hundred dash one seventy by adding definition of categorically eligible participant of Clear Path Relief Program, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Tabarez has proposed ordinance for amendment of the annual appropriation ordinance to transfer funds within the Twenty-third Ward Wage Allowance Account for the year 2025, which is referred to Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alder Person Scott has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Officer Ella French Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Scott also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorable Dr. Dennis Dear Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Persons Sichu Lopez, Viegas, or, excuse me, Alder Persons Sichu Lopez, Vasquez, and Haddon have a proposed resolution to call for release of Mumad Kali from the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agents, ICE, and for investigation into circumstances surrounding his detention, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Two committees called, the Committee on Health and the Committee on Public Safety, matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alder Persons Sichu Lopez has a proposed resolution for recognition of Representative Al Green's defense of Medicaid, which is referred to Committee on Health and Human Relations. Alder Person Burnett has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Burnett also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three and four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two to allow additional alcoholic liquor and package good licenses on portions of North Wall Street, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alder Person Irvin has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Amron Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Cruz has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Basimi Olafar Wabi Augustatui Way, Honorary Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Cruz also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as John Williams McClair Way, which is referred to Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Wagisback has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 3208 North Lincoln Avenue, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Wagisback, City Clerk Valencia, and others have a proposed resolution to call for the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight to establish subcommittees to analyze transparency of appointment process of City of Chicago sister agencies and boards, which is referred to Committee on Ethics and Environmental. Two committees called, the Committee on Ethics and the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations, the matters referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alder Person Conway has proposed order for a permissive waiver for the Rector Building at 79 West Monroe Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Conway also has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 564 West Randolph Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Ramirez Rosa has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code Section seventeen dash three dash zero five hundred, designating North Milwaukee Avenue from North Rockwell to North Francis to North Central Park as a pedestrian street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Viegas has proposed resolution to call for hearings on citywide installation of speed camera locations, which is referred to a joint committee of the Committee on Economic Capital Development and the Committee on Public Safety. Two committees have been called, the Joint Committee on Economic and Public Safety and the Committee on Transportation, the matters referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Alder Person Viegas also has proposed resolution to call on the U.S. Congress to preserve tax exempt status of municipal bonds, which is referred to Committee on Finance. Alder Person Napolitano has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. And Alder Person Silverstein has proposed ordinance for correction of an amendment of the municipal code Section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three to allow additional package good licenses on portion of West Devon Avenue, which is referred to Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of automatic introductions.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Alder Woman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank our colleagues, you all. Vice Mayor Burnett is currently at the vial of his mother, Mother Dorothy Mae Briscoe. So I ask that we give a moment of silence for yours and support for Vice Mayor Burnett, who's with his family as we speak. If we can please stand. Thank you, Mr. President, and to the Vice Mayor, we love you.
Love you all too. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Alder Woman Coleman, for the approval of the Journal. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
All right. Mr. President, I am not aware of any corrections to the Journal from the February 19th, 2025 meeting and move that it be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered for unfinished business. Alderman Mitchell.
I'm not aware of any unfinished business.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did, we do have a colleague's last meeting today. I looked behind me, but he's gone. So if he's in the building, we just wanted to wish Alderman Carlos Maria Esposito farewell since this is his last meeting with us. While we may not have always agreed on everything, I do respect the Alderman and want to wish him the best in his new endeavor at the Chicago Park District.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin, for that recognition. For unfinished business, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I am not aware of any unfinished business.
Very well. What about miscellaneous business, Alderman Mitchell?
Except for the ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting, I'm not aware of any miscellaneous business.
For the date and time of the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the Clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Mr. Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Being ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, Section One, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, April 16th, 2025, beginning at 10 o'clock a.m. in the Council Chamber in the second floor of City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. Section Two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
So you move for the passage of the next meeting in the omnibus. Is that correct? Thank you. I accept that motion and hearing no objections, so ordered. On the omnibus, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Very well. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That ordinance that Laspada just put in about the sidewalks, have that one, that sidewalk that Laspada put in, Vasquez, did you see that?
If you're okay with it, then it could be a joint of those two. I don't care.
Have we done? The omnibus from Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Mitchell, Alderman Mitchell. On the matters of the omnibus, have we done that already? On the matters of the omnibus.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Finance and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. This meeting is adjourned.